Thank you all. At being six o'clock, I hereby call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for August 7th, 2024. And Sheri, would you call a roll, please?
Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Trent.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
And one vacancy.
All right. Commissioner Bennett, if you'd lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Lucas, any suggested changes to the agenda?
Nope.
Very good. And we'll move on to public communications. That's time set aside during this meeting for people to discuss any item of city business that is not on the agenda. So, kind of a free-for-all. I don't have any cards here. Is there any speaker cards? Is there anyone here present who wishes to speak during public communications?
I think we didn't submit a card. We'll come up then.
Yeah, just introduce yourself, please.
A familiar face.
Yes, hello. Sarah Camelli, Assistant Planner. As you guys know, I think Lucas told you, this is my last Planning Commission. And, one, I wanted to come and take this all in because I've just really enjoyed the process and everything, experiencing this with all of you. But I also just wanted to thank all of you for being a part of this, you know? I feel incredibly lucky that I have had the chance to work here and I can continue to work here. And I feel very lucky that I've been able to work with this incredible team, you know, staff, all of you included. So, yeah, I'll leave it there. Thank you so much for everything.
So where are you going and what are you going to do?
I'm going to go to grad school in New York.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Big. Awesome.
But yeah, I'm continuing with the urban planning, so.
What school?
This has been a really positive first experience and I'm so happy because it's just kind of led me to want to continue, so.
Awesome. What school?
Columbia.
Awesome. Wow, congratulations.
Thank you so much. You are all so incredible. I've just really, really enjoyed every, you know, meeting, just working with all of you, so thank you.
Well, you've been fantastic. Now, I've heard that you might be staying on in some capacity?
Yeah, I'll be working part-time, so you might still see my name on some things.
Very good.
I'm very happy. Just on special projects, whatever they decide to assign me, so maybe some more slides.
And when you decide you're done and you come back, maybe you'll sit over there.
Two years.
Or maybe you'll sit up here.
Yeah, perhaps. Well, thank you again so much.
Thank you again for all your work.
Of course. Bye. Not bye, I'll be here.
And I'd also like to introduce myself. I'm the newest member of the community development team. My name's Brian Shermer, and I'm born and raised here in Ojai. And so, this is my first Planning Commission meeting, obviously, so coming full circle with Sarah, I guess. And she's been showing me the ropes. And, yeah, I'm a recent graduate of the University of Minnesota. And I initially intended on coming back to Ojai after having had honed my planning aptitudes, but I guess this is my training ground instead. And I'm very grateful to have been given this opportunity to work with you guys and to serve the community that has been nothing but good to me, so.
Welcome back home.
Yes, welcome.
Pretty cool. You're like a unicorn.
Yeah.
The place you grew up.
Yeah, I guess so. I guess that's what I've been told, so, yeah. Putting the pressure on, you know, right?
I've spent a little bit of time in Minnesota, but it was in January and February I was most impressed with the dump trucks with the six-foot blades on the front that clear the freeway. They just get echelon lined up and they run right down the freeway and you wind up with 15-foot-tall banks of snow either side and a clean road. It's amazing.
Yeah, I know, it's amazing how us humans tend to adapt to our environments, right?
You won't see much of that here.
Yeah, right.
Indoor sidewalks from building to building is what impressed me about Minnesota.
Look forward to working with you all and attending meetings in the future.
Great.
Be ready for lots of questions.
Oh, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Anyone else wishing to speak during public communications? Sheri, anyone out in television land?
No.
Hold on, there's three more comment cards that came in, but let's just make sure they're for public comment or if they're specific. And while those cards are coming in, I'll just mention that it's been a joy working with Sarah. I know we're going to keep her on part-time with some special projects as it goes along, but we're going to let her get settled into Columbia and the new environment for her, so you might see her, but it might be towards the end of the year on some stuff.
She might zoom in on occasion.
Good. It's the virtual world we live in, right, to a certain degree? And then Brian's working on some general plan stuff, so you may see him in the near future as well as we schedule some of that stuff, so.
Some advanced planning?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Anyway, that's as far as I can go. I don't want the city attorney to get mad at me for telling, talking about anything else.
Don't want to scare them first time out. Okay, all the speaker cards that I have are for item two, so seeing... This is for public communications? Oh, that's for item two. Okay, very good. And then we will close the time for public communications and go on to the consent item, the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission for July 17th. Did any commissioners have any amendments to suggest to those minutes?
No.
No?
I move acceptance of the July 17 minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Then Sheri, please call the roll on item one.
Bennett?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Quilisi.
Yes, thank you. All right, item two, the public hearing item, conditional use and design review permits.
Disclosure.
Oh, sorry. Disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts.
I have walked both of the properties that are before us today, and I have had no ex parte discussions.
Same. I've walked the locations, no ex parte contacts.
Maura and I took a walk around both properties and walked between the properties and the parking lot.
Did you get to the back of the area where there's supposed to be parking?
Yeah, we did. Well, it's actually, it's along, it goes out to the front. It isn't really in the back.
It's both.
I mean, there is some in the back, but it's along the front. And we met with one of the principals of the company, and he gave us the tour and explained what he was looking at and what he was thinking.
Okay, very good. I have walked both of the hotel properties. I have not walked that long, narrow parcel in between. But went by the beginning of it, and I had no ex parte contacts.
I did.
So let's move on to item two, then, the public hearing item, conditional use permit and design review permits for two hotels in the East End. Maura?
Yes, thank you. My name is Maura McAluso. I'm your principal planner. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners.
We'll introduce the case at least.
So I accidentally lost the PowerPoint, so Lucas is going to try and figure that out for me. It's a very simple PowerPoint, just to kind of go along with what I'm saying. It's one screen. I can start without it. So the request is for approval of a conditional use permit and design review permit for weekly, monthly, and annual events, including weddings, for the Capri and Hummingbird Inn, Capri Hotel, Hummingbird Inn, located at 1180 and 1208 East Ojai Avenue. The two hotels are under the same ownership. They're managed by the same group, which is the Social Shelter Club, and they share the same event coordinators. And so hence the one staff report, one presentation, but we do have two resolutions that are in your packet, and they have their own separate conditions of approval. There are two required discretionary permits for you and one for the director if this one is approved, these two are approved. Section 10-2.503 of the Ojai Municipal Code requires that all uses be conducted within enclosed structures unless they're granted a conditional use permit. That's, so there's your conditional use permit. Section 10-2.2003 requires the design review permit if there's a change in the use, the parking requirement, and the additional events for these two sites will require additional parking. The off-site parking that's being requested is included here in your request. However, for the Capri, it's, the distance is greater than what would be allowed. And so, that extra 60 or 68 feet would require a minor variance, does require a minor variance, and that would be through the Director.
Oh, yeah. The off-site parking is a little more than 500 feet from the property.
For Capri.
Yeah.
Right, not for Hummingbird. So the Capri Hotel is a 30-room hotel located on approximately 1.14 acres, and it fronts onto Ojai Avenue. There's parking in the front and on the east side of the building. The site backs up to a parking lot that's associated with the Ojai Ranger Station, and this parking lot serves as a buffer for this property, for the residential properties that are to the north. The Hummingbird is a 31-room hotel that has three separate buildings, and it's located on a 1.14-acre parcel as well, located on the corner of East Ojai Avenue and Golden West Avenue. And I'm going to... I want to go to the... I don't know what I'm going to do without Sarah. Well, and Lucas. Well, actually, I don't have to lose Lucas. Lucas will be here. I know, but Sarah will be gone, and she's the one that does all this for me. So, I guess I'm going to have to learn it. Okay, so here on the screen, you'll see the Capri Hotel here, which is west of the Hummingbird, which is here, and then the off-site parking, which is here at 1216. So let's see. So the onsite parking for the Hummingbird Inn is centrally located. It's enclosed by the three separate structures, as well as the swimming pool. And so their parking is right here. It's a little hard to see, but it is in your packet. The proposed overflow off-site parking located east of Hummingbird at 1216 East Ojai, as I just showed you. The area is a .69-acre parcel. There's approximately 6,600 square feet of the area in the front that has a office building and paved parking for approximately eight parking spaces. The remainder of the site to the rear is unimproved, and the applicant has indicated that together with the eight parking spaces in the front and then the rear area, that the site accommodates approximately 45 parking spaces. The proposal does not include improving the unimproved area at the rear, but keeping it with grass, whether the grass is dead or alive, will reduce dirt and mud and other related issues that can happen with an unimproved area for parking. The Capri Hotel, as I said previously, is approximately 560 feet away from the off-site parking, and that's where the Director's consideration of a minor variance would come into place post-approval from the Planning Commission of the conditional use permit. The, I want to talk a bit about valet parking, because in 2023, a valet parking ordinance was approved by the City Council. The Capri Hotel is within the area subject to, quote, onsite valet parking, this onsite parking ordinance that was adopted. The ordinance regulates parking of cars by valet parking operators or businesses in a specifically delineated area, and the Capri Hotel is within this area. The Hummingbird is not. So staff suggests that the Planning Commission add a condition of approval stating that any onsite valet parking for the Capri Hotel be approved and operated under the provisions of Municipal Code Section 10-2.1411.5, which states that off-site valet parking shall only be allowed subject to the limits required in the Municipal Code, same section, and approval of a temporary use permit for each event for off-site valet parking. So what this translates to is that the Capri Hotel can have as much valet parking onsite as they want, but for off-site parking, they would be permitted six 24-hour events per calendar year, and those six events would be subject to approval of a temporary use permit through the Director.
Which means a fee for each event?
Yes. Yes. So...
With valet parking. They wanted valet parking for the event.
For the event, right.
It would require a permit.
Off-site valet parking requires a TUP.
Right, the parking, not the event. The events would be approved tonight through you, but for valet parking, they would have an extra permit request.
And you said that...
And a limit of six times a year?
Yes. And that's for, now, that's for valet parking. That's not for parking off-site necessarily. It's just for valet parking. I can drop my six friends off at the Capri Hotel, and then I can go and park at the off-site parking, and then I can walk.
And walk a block back, yeah.
Or we can all six park off-site at the overflow parking and walk back. So it's just for valet parking, and so valet parking is when you have a company or employees other than yourself come and take your car for you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Trent.
Oh, just a quick, they're not requesting valet parking.
No, they're not. I just wanted to let you know that they're within the subject area in case this comes up, in case it comes up for you or in case it comes up for them. And that'd be included in the conditions of approval.
It's not part of this conditional use permit. It's not part of this design review permit.
So what...
It's in the code that a TUP is required.
Yeah, so what the City Attorney's Office is recommending is that that condition is added to the Capri's conditions for the CUP, just so that it's very clear to everybody what the requirements are.
Just to say, if valet parking for the off-site locale is requested, you have to go through this set of hoops?
Yes. So we just want to make it clear for future everybody, right, so that there's no confusion on what's expected.
Commissioner Murphy, did you have a question?
It was answered.
Okay.
Asked and answered.
Okay. So each of the proposals includes a schedule of weekly, monthly, annual, and wedding events all to be held outdoors, well, for these permits. The events are proposed to range in size from weekly, small gatherings of approximately 10 to 50 people, 12 monthly events from 50 to 150 people, and annual events up to 180 people. Wedding events would be full-room buyout, where guests would have exclusive access to the property, including the parking.
If you want to be married at the Capri or married at the Hummingbird?
Yes, there would be full buyout.
Buy out the place.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the monthly events are, would be limited to 12 events per calendar year. Annual events are limited to four events within a calendar year, and the applicant is requesting 15 wedding events within the calendar year. However, staff recommends the Planning Commission revise condition number 22 for Capri and number 21 for Hummingbird to limit the number to 12 versus 15, which would be consistent with the approval for the Rancho Inn. Staff has consulted with the applicant, who has identified that no two events would be scheduled at the same time that would exceed the available onsite plus off-site parking. And so, planning staff suggests that the Planning Commission also add a condition of approval stating such, and this actually comes from, so, an email conversation with Chair prior to the meeting this morning, which makes total sense. So the applicant is aware of the city's noise ordinance, and they're proposing in their description a, to install a decibel reader to ensure compliance. So even though their request, they're suggesting that or offering that up, staff hasn't included it as a condition of approval. However, what is included as a condition is that the applicant be held to residential noise standards as opposed to commercial, which would be 55 decibels at night, as opposed to 65, and that's because of the surrounding residential sensitive uses. And with that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve the CUP 23009 for Capri, and with Capri, it's also the design review permit 23020, and CUP 23008 for Hummingbird, along with DRP 23019.
And a minor variance.
You're not considering the minor variance after you do this, then it would come back, then the Director would be considering that after the fact.
Okay, okay.
No point in doing that unless the conditional use permit and design review permit get approved.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
Not at this time.
Okay. It was suggested that we have public comment, or public testimony.
I'm sorry.
Before going in-depth with questions for staff. I have a lot of questions.
And I forgot something.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to let the Commission know that we've received 15 emails today for tonight's meeting.
I saw many, yeah.
Yeah, three of them are not supportive necessarily, or they have concerns, and the rest are supportive of approving as proposed.
I spent a good amount of time this afternoon reading. Sheri kept dumping more emails on us, which is good.
Yeah, it should be noted, they're loaded to website as well, so they're viewable.
I'm sorry?
They're reviewable on the website.
They're loaded to the website.
Oh, okay.
For public review or viewing.
If anybody cares. Who said what? It's out there, okay. What do you think? Should we have, my concern in one way is that if we don't ask questions now, we may have the questions come up in public testimony, whereas if we ask questions now, that may answer some of the questions that the public may have.
I'm okay with having the public speak first.
Okay.
I am, too.
You're right. They might ask the questions that we have, and it's better coming from the public than it's coming from us.
Very good, okay. Well, we will hold off on commission questions for staff and then go right to the public testimony. First up, Robin Gerber.
Hi, I'm Robin Gerber. I live here in Ojai. Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, I'm here to speak in favor of you approving these requests. Kenny Osahan has proven herself a great partner for the city, a great entrepreneur. And of course, she's running a business, but she's also running a business for, that benefits the city. As we all know, that's why it's called the Shelter Social Club. It brings people together. I would also say just about these two hotels and where they're located, that they're mid-century hotels. There are very few people, I'm guessing, who live within the area that might be affected residentially, who came before the hotels were there. So this was, it was known that there would be this commercial, that that commercial establishment was there. I happen to live near the high school. I couldn't miss that it was there when I bought my house, and sometimes we get noise that we didn't expect. So that's it. I just wanted to say that I support it. I want to say one more thing. Thank you for pointing out about the valet parking. We see the mischief and waste of government money and staff time over an issue that had, not blaming you all, that the City Council took up and passed that was completely unnecessary for this city, and this is how it plays out. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Second, Larry Steingold.
Hello. Hi, Larry Steingold, resident. The fact that the hotels were there first before Golden West is a little bit disingenuous because it was a motel and not a wedding venue, a party venue, or anything. It was a motel, so those people, all right, so aside from that. Parking on Golden West, is that permitted or not approved? Noise affecting the meters should be required for date and time and enforcement. It's like, is it going to be three strikes and you shut them down? Is it three times and there's a warning and then you shut them down, or what is the process? So that they know, and everybody knows, that if there's a complaint, this is the process, and then after the second complaint, the third, whatever it is, like the hammer comes down, right? And is there enough parking for each property to have their own activity if it's not enforced? In other words, does each property have its own enough parking to do this without a CUP or variance? So no, they're getting one, that's why the lot. Does a sidewalk have to be built to go back and forth to the parking lot for their people? Fine, all right. But my concern is the noise for the neighbors, and people have asked me, they said, Larry, you go. And parking on Golden West and enforcement. And other than that, this is the same as the Rancho. They have to come back in a year from now, right, and see if they did okay. That should be part of it, because the Rancho had to come back for a year, after a year to get blessed.
Actually, two, I think.
What? They did.
It was two years.
Well, whatever it is, Rancho had to come back, and then they got, hey, you don't have to come back, you did a good job, but it doesn't travel with the real estate. It travels with the business, because if they sell the business, the new buyer has to come in and get this all redone again.
Actually, a CUP goes with the property.
That's not what was said when the Rancho did it. When the Rancho was approved on the review for that year, for the last year, they asked the question, does this travel with the real estate? And the answer was no, it only travels with the business. So when someone wants to buy the business, they got to come back in. That's what was said. We were here.
Yeah, but it was based on the land use. It wasn't...
It was said that if the business is sold, they have to come back in here and get reblessed to do this. It was very, very clear.
Well, there was a change of ownership, I believe, clause.
Right.
That was a condition.
Yeah, can I just respond to that?
Yeah.
The only thing I think that would happen with that is if the business changes hands and it remains vacant or not in use.
That's not...
For a matter of 180 days, then yes.
That wasn't, no, no.
That's a standard part of the code.
Go back to the minutes and the thing it was asked.
And we have a review of what the actual language was from the...
Right, right. Because it shouldn't be automatic, because if the person buying the business is not as pleasant, community-oriented, as whatever, then we end up having to come back in here and having to unwind it. So it's easier to review it before, so.
Thank you, Larry. Next, Debbie Rubenstein.
Hi, I'm Debbie. I just want to say, first of all, to the woman who spoke first, she lives near the high school. I wonder what she would think if she lived in the Golden West track, if she would have a different answer on how she thought about the situation? I happen to live right on Golden West and Anita, so I'm two blocks from there on Golden West. The parking right now, if you were to drive down Golden West, just from the people who live in the neighborhood, is very sparse, as it is on Gregory and Anita, because the city has allowed a lot of those twin homes to put ADUs in, in their garages. So now, we not only have more people, but we have more cars, we have more traffic. And if you're telling me that you're going to have events that for 150, 180 people, there's not going to be enough parking for people, of course, they're going to park on Golden West and on the side streets. And for the people going to the Capri, they're not going to park in that parking lot next door to the Hummingbird and walk. They're going to park to what's closest, and what's closest is parking on Golden West. And how are you going to stop that from happening? I mean, you don't have control over it. Nobody would have control over it. And it is like the noise factor, too. You know, there's a lot of young families that live there with little kids, you know, that go to sleep early. And, you know, and like Larry said, when we moved into these neighborhoods, there was none of this going on. It was just a hotel and a hotel. So, you know, there's, what am I trying to say? There's just like, the woman said, we didn't move, we moved into that neighborhood without this noise and without this extra stuff going on, and that's what we thought we bought into, and I am very opposed to this. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, Julia Weissman.
Hi, I'm Julia Weissman, and the Rancho Inn has been the center of my community in Ojai ever since I moved here eight years ago. And Kenny and the management have always been super generous with the community, allowing us to pitch ideas for events. We've had, my husband has had two separate film screenings at Rancho, one for his personal documentary and one in coordination with the Ojai Film Society. And the fact that it's limited to twelve events a year, you know, we, we can't stretch Kenny's generosity that far. So to have two more potential venues to have film screenings is amazing for an amazing opportunity. And I think, you know, we, I, I've been going to events there for so long, and I know that we as patrons are really conscious, and we, we have followed the rules that were laid out. And I'm sure we can do that in a new neighborhood. My husband is actually right now having a film screening at my house, and I don't want it at my house. So, thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Is there anyone else here present who wishes to speak on this item? Please come up. Introduce us to your friend.
This is Grace. We're both fans of the Ojai Rancho Inn. It's been a big part of my, my community when I first moved here in 2017. The Shelter Social Club in general has been a great space. I've, I've spent time at the Capri and the Hummingbird with friends who are staying there, and it's, it's, they're both beautiful hotels. Kenny and her team have provided a unique experience in Ojai, affordable, quality hotels, beautifully designed hotels. And it, they created a very special environment, and it's always very community, community orientated. I think this would be a great asset to Ojai, to have a few new locations. I, I work at the Ojai Valley Inn, so I, I understand, you know, weddings on very large scales. And I think it's, it would be beautiful to have a small wedding location in Ojai, or even two, which would perhaps be more, three? Sorry, more affordable for the commu, local community as well as visitors. As, as for the other events, they've, they bring the community together. I remember coming to the meetings for the Rancho Inn and, and a lot of the resistance to it and all the restrictions put in place for, for those events. And Kenny and her team excelled at meeting those conditions and worked really hard to make sure that they complied with everything. And I think they will continue to do the same. It's in their nature, it's in their nature. I support the motion.
Okay, thank you sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Grace, time to move. You want to repeat performance?
No, I just wanted to say that the Rancho is not in a neighborhood, in the middle of a neighborhood. So, I think that's a big difference between the Rancho.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we, we in fact had complaints on that previous case by people who didn't like noise or traffic or pedestrian traffic. So, there are some similarities. Sherry, is there any raised hands out there in the waiting room?
No, can you turn the PowerPoint? I can't see. Oh, yes, we have one person.
Please bring him in. Mister iPhone, please identify yourself and give us your thoughts.
Mrs. iPhone, this is Marley Riley and Gabriel Riley as well.
Oh, oh, those are initials, thank you.
Oh, I see, M R.
Comes up on screen as Mister iPhone, yeah.
Got it, there you go.
Didn't know what to expect.
We are residents of the Golden West neighborhood. We are directly behind the ranger station, so we are kind of catty corner to the Capri. I do have concerns pertaining to noise. I will say that while the number of large events at the Capri has been reduced over time, and it sounds like the wedding events will be limited to, I think, I, I'm not sure how many, it's centered around twelve or something. I will say that the noise, while at decibel level, approved decibel levels, is still quite bothersome to neighbors. We have a small child who goes to bed at eight, and it has kept them up in the past. But more so, it's the screaming drunk people after ten PM in the back of the Capri that are really a nuisance. Lots of loud noise, voices, laughing. I'm pleased that people are having fun at weddings, but when it carries beyond ten PM and the Capri has shown that they do not clamp down on that noise, I have called at midnight to try to have somebody go and please have the people stop screaming in the back, but nobody picks up. So, that is a, a, a big concern of, of mine and my husband's. So that's number one. My questions are around the more frequent events and what those look like. Film screenings, great, I'm all for them. Food trucks with live music, I'd need to know a little bit more. And I'm, I'm hoping that we can get to that in the follow-up questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else with a raised hand out there, Sherry?
No.
Okay, then we're going to close this portion of the public hearing, and we'll pick up with any other questions that commissioners might have for staff after the introduction of the case.
I'd like to start with the license for liquor. As I understand it from the staff report, Capri has a liquor license and the Hummingbird does not. Are there plans to request one for the Hummingbird? And does the Capri license allow for events, and in other words, outside people coming in and purchasing liquor? It, it looked to me from the staff report that that liquor license only allows liquor to be sold to the residents or the guests of the hotel.
The liquor license for the Capri is specifically for the guests, like in-room.
In-room guests.
Right, and the Hummingbird does not have an ABC license, just, just like you said. And so, I'm going to let the applicant answer that, but I.
Okay.
Yes, they would, some, something would have to happen for their events.
Could we, could we hear from the applicant on that?
Yes.
Good evening, Commissioners, good evening, staff. Can you guys repeat the question again? Sorry.
Yes. I would like to know your plans to expand upon the liquor license at the Capri and any plans to obtain one at the Hummingbird.
Hi, Commissioners, I'm Kenny Osahan. So, for the Capri, our liquor license is only for our hotel guests.
Registered guests.
Are you planning anything else?
No, when we have had weddings in the past or any other event in the past that allows for an outside vendor under a TUP, we have a caterer that comes in with their own liquor license, and they can serve liquor in the, in the event area.
So, in other words, for an event, you do have a liquor license except for the fact that it's through the vendor?
Yeah, we don't, yeah, the vendor has it, yes.
So you don't have any plans to change that?
No.
Same for the Hummingbird?
The Hummingbird, we have plans to get the same liquor license as we have at the Capri, so it would only be for registered hotel guests. But if there's a wedding at the Hummingbird, it would have to be through a vendor for liquor license.
Okay. Should I just keep going here, or do you want to discuss that subject some more?
I mean, we can discuss it after, after we're done with questions for.
Okay.
Yeah, but I have some questions too.
Sure.
Can I just add a note? I think it's important to recognize with these ABC licenses, it allows for us to regulate the use and consumption of alcohol. If we don't have a license in place, anyone who's a hotel guest can stay with the property, bring their own alcohol, and we can't regulate it. But with us having the license, we can restrict that they only consume alcohol purchased through us, and therefore enforce that a little bit more.
You mean, you mean to say that if you're having a wedding, that the, that the wedding party can't come in with their own liquor?
No.
Question on the, on the weddings, if you have, you said that in the wed, if you have a wedding, you're going to have a vendor serve the alcohol?
Yeah.
And so how does that work with the hotel guests and the liquor license? So they have the liquor license, but they get it for the specific event?
Yeah, correct. So, there's different areas on the property that's licensed. Our license pertains to the pool area, the lobby, and the rooms.
Got it.
And then for the backyard, it's open, and their liquor license would be only allowed in that area.
And at the Hummingbird, it's going to be the wedding event or events, all events, could be at the, the parking lot that you guys are looking at. Now, a question.
The parking lot?
You mean?
The property next door?
Yeah, the vacant lot. That's where they're going to host.
I thought that was for parking.
Well, it's a question. Is it going to be for, it sounds like it's an either-or usage? Is that correct?
So, for hu, the, for the Hummingbird?
Yeah.
Events at the Hummingbird, we would have it in the courtyard area where the parking lot is currently for the guests?
On the west side of the building, yeah.
You just would make your.
Parking's on the east side.
Yeah, exactly.
You, you would have your guests remove their cars for the event?
In that extra parking lot next to the Hummingbird, that vacant lot.
In the plans, it states that you could also have events on that lot. Is that true, or no?
No.
No.
That's not our intention, no.
We need to adjust that.
Where is that, John?
Grab a citation on that and we'll come back to it, yeah.
I'll show you. It's, ooh, where did it go? I'll come back to it. I have to find it.
Okay.
Go ahead, do you have additional questions?
Okay, yes. I'd like to discuss the off-site parking.
We don't want to keep you standing unless it's a question that you need to answer.
Oh, okay.
This is really, we're really asking for clarification of the case from staff at the moment.
Since.
It's just kind of spilled over.
Yeah, I apologize, yeah, but I still have some questions for them.
But, yeah, stay put.
Okay, alright, alright.
I apologize, yeah.
Somebody, I don't care who it is, but.
Yeah, alright.
Whatever. Okay, the off-site parking is space that you're renting, and therefore, I assume you don't really control the surface area. In other words, it's just dead grass at the moment. And there's really no delineation about where people would park, although the, somebody said that there would be forty-five parking places there, is.
You can, you can draw forty-five spaces on a plot plan.
But not on grass.
But if you don't have lines on the ground, then the haphazard nature of parking says you're not going to get anywhere near forty-five cars in there.
Okay, so what I'm asking is, do you have any thoughts about preparing that property that you do not own to better accommodate parking?
So that property is also owned by Steve Edelson, who's my landlord at all three properties. And, and, and yeah, I, we, we will have parking attendants as well as we, as we do for the Rancho weddings and events. So anytime there's a, a wedding or event, we'll make sure that there's somebody there to usher people into proper parking spots and make sure people park accordingly. And, and we, we can, we can, what can we do for the.
I mean, I think temporarily, there's, you can have stakes with tape to differentiate between the different spots. It's something that I've seen in the past, and something that we can do. But also exploring what it would look like to put gravel down, or something that's a little bit more sustainable perhaps.
Yeah.
I will also mention that if you look at Ojai Valley Inn, they have an overflow parking lot on the street that they use for their weddings.
Which?
The Ojai, Ojai Valley Inn by the sign, close to Ojai Valley, to the Ojai Avenue.
By the whitering.
But aren't they using valets to park the cars that are out there on the grass?
I'm not sure about that.
I think they are.
And I apologize, I did find the reference to the, the new event space that was outlined here. It's on, it's on our staff report here on our, on one of our plans here that we have. Anyway, it says that the hatched area shows new event space, eight thousand six hundred square feet.
What page are you on?
There's no page reference.
It's, I'm sorry, excuse me, it's attachment C, page.
Attachment B.
Seven of seventeen, attachment C.
Seven of seventeen.
And. Staff's understanding is that this is not for events but for parking. It does say event space, but I believe it's event parking space, so, and the applicant is shaking their head, they're confirming that. I know that the, at the Hummingbird, there's potential of, they're requesting the, the potential of having the parking lot that's central in the, within the three buildings and the, and the pool and the little grass area, that parking lot to potentially be turned into an event area. But not this parking lot. This parking lot would be specifically for overflow parking.
I think we could, we could probably make a condition to be sure that that is the way it works.
Certainly.
Yeah, yeah. And I did, I found it in the write-up too, I'll make a note. A question on the events, so there, we're outlining that you could potentially have monthly events at each location. Each of these monthly events could have up to a hundred and fifty people, right? And we have, the Hummingbird has thirty-one parking spaces, the Capri has thirty parking spaces, right? Thirty-three, sorry, thirty-three. They both, they're both going to share the overflow parking. So when you combine all three, when you combine those, those two, it equals close to a hundred and fifty people. But what if you have two events happening at the same time?
Yeah, good, good question. I'm, we mentioned, we mentioned that in the project description, that if two events were to occur on the same day, then the maximum attendance for each event is not to exceed the amount of parking spaces that we have available.
Okay, do you have that written in here somewhere?
It should.
Should it be? Did you see that?
Actually, in the, in the, in the report, it said that they would not schedule.
They won't schedule.
Two events at the same time, so.
No, it says, it was, it's very specific that it won't, they won't schedule two events at the same time that exceed the parking. So it's really, yeah, the, the sentence follows through with.
Can you tell me where?
Sure, well, let me, I will find it.
Yeah.
So they could have two events, they just can't exceed the parking?
Right.
I don't know how you control that.
Yeah.
Well, they have, their, their proposal, and, and I, I will leave it up to them ultimately, but their proposal includes that they share an event or more coordinator. And so, they're, they're the ones coordinating the events, and so the events can have X number of people.
But you're counting noses and you're counting parking spaces.
Yes.
And they don't necessarily correlate.
True.
And what we're, I think, concerned about is controlling the parking.
So, on page four of eleven of the staff report, it says wedding events will re, sorry. Staff has consulted with the event coordinator, who has identified that no two events would be scheduled at the same time that would exceed the available onsite plus off-site parking. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, yeah. Alright, so the maximum that you could have would be a hundred and nine, so if you had two events happening at the same time.
Yeah, I think it depends on.
Five plus thirty-three plus thirty-one.
You have thirty-three, that's the existing parking at the Capri, thirty-one. You have thirty-three, that's the existing parking at the Capri, thirty-one that's existing at the Hummingbird, and then forty-five would be shared overflow.
And none of the thirty-three and none of the thirty-one would ever be used for part of an event?
No, that's if they're having two, let's say they're having two events at the same time.
Mm-hmm.
Then the maximum amount of people they could have is, or maximum amount of parking that's available would be one oh nine.
But each parking spot-
I get the arithmetic.
Yeah.
My question is, is it really gonna be thirty-three and thirty-one if you have an event at one place or the other? Are you gonna use any of that existing parking for event?
Yeah.
That cuts down on the total number of parking spaces available?
Right, so if an event is taking over a parking lot, then that parking is no longer available. And that would be, well, for either hotel, but, well, specifically, I guess it would be the Hummingbird. That's where they're saying that the events could be in their parking lot, so that those thirty-one parking spaces are now gone and need to be accommodated in the off-site parking.
And you're down to seventy-eight or seventy-six, or something?
Seventy-eight at the Capri, seventy-six at the Hummingbird. Okay, so then could we adjust this language in here to say, instead of fifty to a hundred people for an event, 'cause that's not gonna happen, you know, for an individual event? The maximum they could have for an individual event in parking theoretically would be seventy-eight at the Capri, and then seventy-six at the Hummingbird.
Well, that's parking spaces, not-
Well, there's no adjustment for, in the parking number, is, we're assuming one per, one car, one, one guest.
Yeah, one car per guest.
Not, not, that two people come together in a car.
Can we say, uh, for, for the permit, though, I think it's one car for, per four people.
That's a generous assumption.
That makes it easier to do the arithmetic, but it's not clear that that's the way-
People really-
-guests are going to organize themselves.
It, it's part of-
Can I, can I just jump in here? The one to four is the, is the ratio we used as a consistent ratio for Ojai Rancho Inn.
One to four?
A one to four ratio.
Do we have any-
Four people per car, you mean?
Is there any data that backs that up?
I'm trying to remember when, when we, when we, because if you look at our code, the parking demand standards, it doesn't identify where that comes from. So instead, we, I'm almost certain that we used something from the planning handbook or something along those lines to, to come up with some sort of a compromise, that, at least a baseline in which we could use to move forward. And the Ojai Rancho Inn was the model in which we used the one to four ratio, or one vehicle equals four, four, four patrons, basically.
Okay.
So it was the standard we used moving forward.
And to respond to Commissioner Trent, you were asking, you know, can, can we, and the commission can, can certainly alter. You can add, subtract, or revise existing conditions.
Okay, cool.
I have a question for council. Is there any way to unpick-
I don't know.
-the valet parking regulations that the council passed? Or give, uh, either the planning director or someone the discretion, or, or a body the discretion to, to waive it? Or is it, uh, is this just an artifact of the, uh, of the council passing this ordinance?
So the way it's written now, no one has the discretion to change those regulations. We, it would require some kind of an amendment to allow either, Lucas, that kind of a discretion, this body, but the way it's written now, it's a, it's a blanket regulation and not something that can be amended by the commission.
This is an observation. I don't know if now's the time for observations, but the combination of no valet parking and the fact that the sidewalks are nonexistent in that area.
No, they are.
And to the extent that there's dirt, it's a, not a sidewalk, but a, a dirt path, they frequently have power poles in the middle of the, of it, which would be forcing the pedestrians out onto the street. I've walked it, I've walked all, including the sixty feet that is not, uh, by ordinance allowed or by code allowed, but it's quite a hike, and you're walking, um, in, in front of, uh, vacant lots and, uh, the Forest Service building, so-
And the old bowling alley.
And the old bowling alley. So it's, it's a lot of walking in sort of unpleasant areas, pushed onto the street because of the lack of, of sidewalks in the area. And, uh, so I think there's, there's an issue there, and to me, valet parking would solve that. But, um, you know, there is an alternative, which is that people are, park their own cars, but then get shuttled back to the, to the Capri, which is the furthest away. Actually, the, the, the Hummingbird is right next to the lot, so you can walk between the two, you don't have to go all the way up to the street.
Yeah.
It's, and unfortunately, it's the Capri, which has the greatest amenity for a large group. It's got the very large yard, which you could do a wedding in, and, uh,
And it's the most buffered from the residential area because there's the, the back end of the Ranger Station parking lot.
Right.
There also. Well, I think, I think adding some conditions that anticipate the future request for valet parking would be a good idea. Uh, I'm not sure how yet to deal with the rest of it. 'Cause they haven't, you haven't requested any valet parking, right? So, so how do you, how do you get people to park efficiently in this area that you allege will hold forty-five cars?
So we, as I was saying earlier, we will have parking attendants to usher people into the proper parking spots and make sure that they're not parking in the neighborhoods.
And they're parking closely enough together that you can get forty-five cars in that space?
Yes.
Yeah, nine-foot wide spaces. Okay. Other questions?
Yeah, lots of them. Um, go ahead.
Questions for the applicant or for staff? I have questions for staff.
Yeah, let me look.
Just don't wanna make them stand up here all night.
Okay.
Can we also speak to the TUPs that we've had for the Capri for weddings in the past? We've, we've had several TUPs for weddings at the Capri in the past few years, and parking hasn't been an issue.
Parking has not?
No.
So they've taken over the entire-
Where did all the guests park? Not in the thirty-one room, room spaces?
A lot of times when people book the Capri for a wedding, or vice versa, they also book the Hummingbird. And so then they have all the parking at the Hummingbird as well, and most of their guests are staying at the Capri and Hummingbird, and then they just walk between the two properties.
And how big are these weddings, do you know?
The weddings, we only allow for up to a hundred and twenty.
But as I understand it, you require a buyout for a wedding?
We require them to buy out.
The, the, um, person who is-
Thirty-one or thirty-three rooms?
You're picking up, you're picking up the parking spaces for the thirty-one rooms. And you're assuming that they're all single occupancy. I think that's a fundamental question, is what, the car occupancy. And, uh-
I don't see any way for any of us to control car occupancy.
Yeah, but, I mean, as a, as a practical matter, you, you know that people go to weddings and they don't go by themselves. I mean, you know, a car usually pulls up and, and it's, it's one plus.
Sure.
And, uh, so, you know, saying, well, you can only, we're gonna count those thirty-one slots as thirty-one people, when it, when it's probably closer to, well, the Rancho is four-
It's not a hundred and twenty-four people either.
What?
It's not a hundred and twenty-four people.
No, but it could be two to one.
Thirty-one cars, yeah.
It could be, it could be two to one, and if it was two to one, it would double the, the value of those slots. You know, I guess, I guess what I'm, again, I don't know if this is the time for this kind of discussion, but I'm, I'm less concerned about that issue than I am the fact that people just don't, are not gonna wanna walk on Ojai Avenue, and, uh, and they're gonna be forced into it because of the lack of sidewalks. And if, if people have nice shoes on, and it's, uh, it's either dusty or muddy, they're, they're gonna be walking on the street, and it's not, it's not a safe condition.
Yeah, I think we probably are edging over into deliberation at this point.
Alright, yeah.
But if there's a question there for staff, I, I don't believe that the city has ever been able to, maybe shouldn't be able to, require people to construct sidewalks other than on their own property. I don't know. Tell us, council, has that ever come up? Has it ever, has it ever come up that someone was required to build a sidewalk on someone else's property?
In my experience, no, but I can definitely look into it and to be sure.
Well, we've had, we've had the question come up in, in previous cases, yeah.
Yeah, that's something I would like to, to dig into more before I give you a definite answer, 'cause I think it's complicated, but usually you can't require someone to build something on someone else's property.
Yeah.
Okay, I do have another question before we go.
Could the city, um, by eminent domain, do a taking of the side, of the, of the land for the sidewalk?
I'll bet that's, I'll bet that's public right-of-way already.
I, I looked into the public right-of-way for Ojai Avenue in that area, which is sixty feet, and from face of curb-
Oh, sixty feet, yeah.
And from face of curb to face of curb is sixty feet. So, like, for instance, the Capri, you see the landscaping there, and they're parking in, it's like, oh, are they parking in the city right-of-way? They are, they're not. That's, that's their property.
It's all private beyond the curb?
Yeah.
Okay. Good to know. Judy?
Okay, yeah. Um, going back to the liquor licenses. In the staff report, it indicates that the Department of Alcohol and Beverage Control stipulates that you cannot use any amplifying equipment. So does this vendor that comes in with their own liquor license, do they have amplifying equipment? Or what is it that you have used in your previous experience with weddings?
The alcohol beverage control says no amplified music in the pool area, but then it says it allows for small speakers playing ambient music.
Right, and you, you don't-
That's the condition on the Rancho.
No, that's for the Capri.
Okay, so in the backyard area, you would have?
Yeah, we have our own PA system, and we have our own sound person as well. We have a decibel reader on hand, and we're constantly walking the property line to make, to ensure that we don't exceed the decibels.
Is the same true at the Hummingbird?
Yes.
You have, so you have a decibel meter-
Yes.
-at each property-
Yes.
And a wandering monitor?
Yes, exactly. Um, Chris here is our events person, he has a decibel reader with him.
It wasn't clear from the staff report?
Yes, we, we, we have all of that in place.
It says, it says that an amplifying system is prohibited, so how can you have a PA system?
That's for the ABC around the pool area only?
It's, uh, it doesn't say that. It says on the premises.
Says on patio and pool areas? Prohibited on patio and pool areas?
Shall not be audible, okay, small speakers.
If I can speak to the, so the ABC, that has to do with the ABC license that they, that they have. So for license, what is it, sixty-six or sixty? So for the guests, in a, like, in a normal situation, not these special events, the guests that are allowed to drink alcohol in their rooms, in the lobby, and at the pool, those special conditions from the ABC apply for that, for their ABC license for that situation. So that is a good question for these other events that are separate, that have a separate liquor license coming in with a caterer.
Yeah.
I don't have the answer for that, but I just wanted you to know that I'm listening to you and that it's a separate question.
Separate question.
Right, the, what you see is specific to that liquor license, not to the ones that are coming in for these special events.
Right, okay. We have a lot of questions coming up.
I have a question on sound for a second here.
Sure.
Um, this shows a limitation, or is the recommendation, that there be a fifty-five decibel, as opposed to sixty-five decibel threshold, which is for residential areas as opposed to commercial areas? And my question is, are you gonna have problems with your clients wanting to get the volume up to sixty-five decibels? Is fifty-five a reasonable cap for you? And if I'm not mistaken, there's quite a difference between the two properties in terms of the adjacency of residential, um, uh, space, I forget which one. But one of them, as you look around, there's no, there's no residential, uh, adjacent property to the motel itself. And the other one, there is.
Actually, Jamie, behind the, the Capri is a very narrow parking lot that extends from the Ranger Station.
Right.
And then behind that, there are, there's residences, all of, I mean, the whole, whole street.
Yeah, 'cause there's a parking, I mean, the immediate-
So, sound-wise-
Hummingbird property goes right up to the wall.
Yeah.
Right.
And, and then also, there's on Attachment A, page seven of fourteen, it indicates that after nine o'clock, it need, needs to go down to forty-five decibels. Is that something that you have been dealing with?
So we were gonna ask if you guys would consider letting us have the sixty-five decibels until ten PM, because that's what we've been-
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Sixty-five or fifty-five?
Sixty-five until ten PM, because that's what we've been abiding by for our TUPs, and it hasn't been an issue.
Yeah, the residences are considerably more distant from the Rancho property than they are either of these.
Is it more so an issue at-
They're across the trail and across the street.
If it's more so an issue at the Hummingbird than the Capri, can we have the fifty-five at nine PM at Hummingbird and sixty-five at ten PM at Capri?
Code's safe for the Rancho.
It's sixty-five and ten PM.
Sixty-five at the Rancho, but there's office buildings around it and stuff.
They're facing out toward Ojai Avenue.
Yeah, and the speakers face out, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, where would the, um, the speakers be positioned?
My name's Chris. I run our hospitality and events for Shelter Social Club. And to answer your question, we take great care and concern with vetting our clients as they approach us for weddings and events. We ensure that we're vetting them on a number of, uh, things, from sound to number of guests, to ensure that we're being good neighbors and always being conscious and considerate of our surrounding community. With taking measurements of sound, we're doing that throughout the event to ensure that it doesn't exceed the City of Ojai noise ordinance of sixty-five decibels. We're doing those readings at the property line every thirty minutes, and consistently monitoring and adjusting the volume to ensure that we're making the necessary adjustments. The, the question about, um, if we could, if our clients would be interested in the venue, if it were fifty-five at nine PM versus sixty-five and ten PM, it, it would be an inhibitor to some of our business. But we also are very careful when people approach us with weddings to pitch the- to pitch the possibility of hosting an event or gathering at our space to be lo-fi, ambient music, and nothing with too much bass or too much. Yeah, and we review the playlists and everything to kind of make sure that it's all within the noise ordinances. So did that answer the question?
Well, specifically.
In part, maybe.
Like, for example, you're having a reception. Where are the speakers going to be positioned? Are they positioned facing Ojai Avenue?
Yes.
Or are they going to be positioned facing the neighborhood?
We always, when setting up for events, the the amplified, the small speakers that we have at the hotel are all positioned away from the residential area and towards Ojai Avenue.
That was that was a condition, as I recall, that we put on Rancho, that they had to point the speakers north because there was junior high school across the.
Does this same arrangement apply to all of your events, not just weddings?
Yes, yeah, I we we treat all of our events, whether it's a birthday or a wedding, we vet the clients the same way and take them through the same process where we understand their total number of guests, the parking implications, and whether or not they would like to include amplified sound as part of their event. And if so, we walk them through the city of Ojai noise ordinances and how we need to wind down the playlist.
Do they bring their own equipment in at any time? Or do you require that they use your P A system?
For most of our events, where we we would require they use our sound system and our sound engineers in order to control the volume, similar to how we control with a liquor license.
So it's one of your employees that's got the fingers on the volume?
Yes.
Button?
And I I would just add, just as a point of interest, to I've been taking readings throughout this throughout this hearing and they've been anywhere from sixty-five to seventy-five decibels. And I would just ask if anybody here has been uncomfortable with the level of the noise in this room because it's far exceeded the city of the city of Ojai's noise ordinance of sixty-five decibels on several occasions, just in this meeting.
Who do we go after, Lucas?
Coke appliance on speed dial.
I'm happy to share this, too, if anybody would like to test my theory there, so.
All right, who's got the loud voice? What is it at the property line?
To our close, can I just make a note?
Sure.
To the to the point of the of the amplified music and the speaker location pointing away from residences, which was a condition that was used as a part of the Ojai Rancho end, that is actually in here as a part of the as part of condition number nineteen B. So it is baked into the proposed resolution before you on both on both of these, so. And it specifically states.
I'm sorry, this is condition nineteen on attachment A, page seven?
Correct. Yeah, so it's nineteen B amplified music. It starts amplified music shall be allowed for monthly and annual held events and weddings and speakers for those events shall be pointed away from residences immediately surrounding the hotel and towards Ojai Avenue.
But this has the fifty-five and forty-five numbers
Yep.
in the condition right now.
Correct.
And there is quite a difference between fifty-five and sixty-five on a logarithmic scale.
It's logarithmic.
Decibels, yeah, yeah. So that's ten times, it's a factor of ten when you have ten D B.
Just a quick question on the weekly, monthly events. These could occur during the weekdays, right? Weekly, monthly events? And it says it'll generally serve the local community? Is that similar to what you guys are doing at the Rancho? And what kind of events are those? I apologize.
I mean, we want to have as low impact events during the week as possible and and during the monthly events as well. It'd be more like a dinner party or a movie screening, a workshop, things of that nature.
Okay, all right. And then the annual events are like the, I know the Rancho, it was a winter festival kind of thing and is something similar?
Annual event for would be maybe most likely a fundraiser or something like that. Because we we like to work with the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy or the Ojai Film Society and it'd be nice to be able to provide a space for fundraisers for them.
And this would be at both events? Those annual events would be at both locations?
Yes, possibly, yes.
Are the number of events up for discussion in in this chart? I mean, who who creates the chart and what is the cap?
Well, it's the.
How is that determined?
It's the applicant that's asked for the numbers of events. And staff has only suggested a change for the weddings from fifteen to twelve, which would match the Rancho. This is a conditional use permit and so it's conditionally approved. And as I said previously, the planning commission can add, remove, or alter the conditions of approval.
Thank you.
Under the under the tables, this is page four of eleven of the staff report, weekly, this means one per week?
So we weekly.
That's a common a common definition of weekly, but could we have weekly yoga classes, weekly art classes, weekly movie screenings?
That that's a good question. And so and the answer is, I I believe that the answer is that any of these things could be once a week. So you could have a yoga class on Mondays and you could have an art class on Tuesdays and a movie screening on Wednesdays and game nights on Thursdays. They would each be once a week. There's not a limit as to how many of those.
So it's.
You could have an event every night.
Yes, as long as it's once a week. And that that's what's.
As long as that particular event only occurs once a week.
Right, right. So that so those events were not limited to the number as were the monthly, annual, and the weddings.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's not necessarily at night. I mean, an event might be during the day.
Well, it might well be, yeah.
Yeah, I might have a swim lesson in the pool on three days a week or two days a week. How does that work?
I guess maybe the question is, what was your intent in asking for weekly events and naming four different types? Was it to have one of each type every week?
I mean, for the sanity of our staff and everyone, I don't think that we could do that. But I think like what we previously did before COVID at the Hummingbird, we had a water aerobics instructor come to the pool and have a water aerobics class for people in the community three times a week and things of that nature. Just really low impact, something that doesn't involve too much noise or.
Were you utilizing the off-site parking up up until now?
Have we utilized that spot, that parking lot? We have, we have it.
What was the answer to that?
Yes.
Yes, you have been that's been.
You've you've been using overflow parking at twelve sixteen East Ojai Avenue?
Yes, for smaller things. Like, there's still a a front section there that has, I think, eight parking spots that we continuously.
I couldn't see much of it when I walked by.
Yeah, okay.
Pardon me?
That's all I have for the applicants, okay. Jamie?
I'm curious about one thing. When I when I walked by, there's a mailbox out front of this little narrow section between Hummingbird and Casa Ojai. And the mailbox says twelve sixteen. Your parking arrangements say twelve thirty-four or some number like that. And I was just wondering where that came from and does that have any effect on the legality of your shared parking arrangement?
It's a clerical error on my part. When you Google the address or you you search for that address online, it says one, two, three, four, East Ojai Avenue. But then I think the accessory office calls it twelve sixteen. So that just needs to be changed to twelve sixteen.
Okay, but it is the property between the two hotels.
Correct.
Let me see what else was there. And I did find, thank you, staff, I I asked about a separate traffic analysis for the Hummingbird. And there are, in fact, two traffic analyses in here. I just missed it. The, let me see. All right. So all of the all of the property that we're talking about right now, including the ranger station and its extending extended parking lot, that is not public land. That is C one land.
That's correct.
That has the ranger station on it.
Yes.
Is that legal?
It's zoned C one.
Is federal facility a permitted use in in C one?
I didn't look to see if it was a permitted use, but I did confirm that it's C one.
It is C, yeah, that's what.
It is C one.
That's what my zoning map said and I was.
And across the street was the the P L. Across from Capri. Oh, I don't know.
Across Ojai Avenue?
Well, the site you're talking about that has the ranger station is zoned C one.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. I think there's an error in the staff in the staff report, right? Is that?
Okay. I guess my last last question for the moment is, do you do you plan, I looked at these at these maps and and you have thirty-one parking spaces at one venue, thirty-three at the other. Will those parking spaces ever be used for an event? And if so, how do you make up for the loss of those parking spaces when you need to have a hundred and fifty people there?
Yeah, I think it would go back to that the formula they initially created with staff where it's four people per car.
That's wildly optimistic.
Well.
So whatever parking spots we would remove, then we would have to make up for that with overflow parking. And we always control how many people attend each event. So let's say there's a wedding. We always have it in the contract how many people are attending. If we host our own events, we click, have a clicker, we sell tickets so we can control the attendance. Therefore, we know how many parking spots we need to have. And that formula is something that we've used in the past.
Okay. Maybe this is walking over old ground again, but the staff report says, staff has consulted with the event coordinator who has identified that no two events would be scheduled at the same time that would exceed the available onsite plus offsite parking. How do you control that?
So let's say the scenario, we we have a wedding at the Capri and it's for a hundred people. Then we make the formula and of how many spots we would need, the thirty-one, sorry, the thirty-three spots plus however many overflow parkings. And then let's say the second example is we have a buyout at the Hummingbird. It could be a corporate retreat and then we know what type of maximum attendance we need for that and make sure that we have enough parking for that.
So whoever books first gets the parking spaces and the second booker can't have as many people at their event?
Correct. And Chris here is the one controlling all the inquiries, signing all the contracts, and is responsible for the execution of all these events. So it's all a controlled process.
Do you bring in bathrooms for these larger events? That like your annual fundraisers, pop-up markets and that sort of thing? Restrooms are.
For for annual event, we would bring in, we would bring in portable restrooms.
Johnny or something.
Something.
Yeah, mm-hmm, for an annual event or a large event. But we typically don't need to for the events like smaller intimate weddings of up to a hundred and twenty people. We don't need to.
If it's a marketplace kind of an event, do each of the vendors have to have a license or pay a fee to come in? And who controls that?
Yes, and we we ensure that the people, if it's a marketplace, that they submit their permit number as part of the application process.
Okay.
We review that. And just to speak to the order of operations for if someone were to book a wedding at the Capri and there were another event to happen at the Hummingbird and the available parking and and the formula, we often are approached by clients who have their wedding at a venue offsite and don't require as much, they only require parking at the hotel for guests who are lodging at the hotel and then they use shuttle service to go to the offsite.
But that that wouldn't be considered one of your events, would it?
I'm I'm using that as an example for if we had booked a wedding at the Capri where we would need to use most of the parking, then we would only entertain a wedding booking at the Hummingbird where they had an offsite venue and would use shuttle service so that we wouldn't go over that allotted amount of parking. So we're we're really careful in how when clients approach us. We've said no to many clients that we just can't accommodate their wedding. And though we'd like to host them, we're not able to because their guest list exceeds our maximum capacity or their interest to have a certain DJ or a certain live music that we're not able to accommodate them and that the events that we plan and host at our venue are of an intimate, lo-fi, ambient nature that are, you know, small and lovely. You'd all you'd all have a great time, I promise. That's my job.
Okay.
The live music thing, they don't bring their own equipment? A live band would be willing to hook up?
Instrumentalists. We've occasionally had like a like strings and stuff if somebody is having like a little poolside with with, you know, a little Spanish guitar and and things like that and and sometimes that's acoustic, but yeah, nothing. That's why that's why we say we turn away inquiries for if they want to have a band with live music and drums and all those things. We say, we're not the venue for you because we're in a residential neighborhood and we're kind and considerate to our neighbors.
A question for staff. The provision on page four of eleven of the staff report about no two events scheduled at the same time that would overflow the parking, is that in the conditions of either resolution?
No, and I I believe I suggested in my presentation that the commission either consider discussing that and adding that into this into the conditions of approval. There were a couple of suggestions that you add conditions in my presentation.
I think that would be.
I can get those together.
A useful addition to the.
Yes.
Conditions of approval.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see what else I had. Yes.
In my what I suggested was, well, actually was just that, pretty much that that condition be turned into a that that statement be turned into a condition of approval.
Yeah.
I said that staff suggests that the planning commission add a condition
Right.
where the no two events would be scheduled at the same time that would exceed the available onsite plus offsite parking.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Now getting into discussion, I think.
Yeah, I guess we are. Is there any more clarification we need from staff?
I have some questions for staff.
Great.
But I don't know, do we need the applicant still to stand?
Turns out, we don't know yet. Why don't you go ahead and and continue to ask questions of staff?
Okay, all right, cool. The our our code for parking for hotels for this land use that we have, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it says that it's one space per per occupancy, right, per unit? And then there's one additional spot for the manager, right?
Yes.
And then I think there's a is there another additional spot that's required? Or is it just?
Let me look up that code section because it's pretty specific.
The only reason I ask is I think the Hummingbird has, what, thirty-one rooms? And and they have thirty-one parking spots.
Yeah, so you've.
Yeah, so you've gotta think about what that code section says specifically versus when the Hummingbird facility was built. It's the same, it's a very similar conversation to previous hotels that we've had conversations on, right?
Right. They don't meet the parking requirements.
When, when we were talking about a...
Yep.
Newly reappearing hotel right downtown...
Correct.
Then staff parking was a question.
Right, yeah, got it.
When you have a marketplace kind of an event where you have vendors bringing in their stuff, have you counted them as needed parking?
Well, we've only done the vendor thing at the Rancho and all the vendors stay at the Rancho, so they're hotel guests. Um, so we haven't done that.
Oh!
So, we...
So, they're automatically included in your counting?
Yeah, and a big reason for us to have these events is also to fill hotel rooms as well. So, we would like our vendors to also rent the hotel rooms.
Okay, so they rent a room...
Provision.
And then they pay a fee? And they show you their permit? And then they pay you to, to be there?
Right, correct.
So, all of the parking in your over, in your offsite is really for the public then?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
If we were to fill every single room and parking spot with vendors, but we already do that at the Rancho, so I don't think we have the capacity to do that in another property. Okay.
Question for staff on attachment A, page nine of fourteen, going through the conditions. This is a Capri, I believe. Uh, but I think the condition is similar to what's on the Hummingbird. And I wanted to clarify if this was a carbon copy of what we have for the Rancho or if this is something additional. Number twenty-four basically says on an annual basis, January first of each successive year, the property owner shall provide the city of Ojai Community Development Department with a summary of the events that have occurred within that calendar year to identify which category they fall into, weekly, monthly, annual, and weddings, da-da-da-da-da. Is this the same verbiage that's in the conditions for the Rancho?
This condition came, yes.
But, but this doesn't require that we, that it comes to the planning commission?
Correct.
And so...
Well, what I was gonna say is that I don't wanna guarantee that it's exactly the same verbiage, however, I did take the condition. And right, it doesn't require that you come back. It requires that they, um, that the applicant give a report and that the director, um, and also if we've received any complaints and then that the director, um, publishes a written memorandum and summarizes the results and forwards it to the planning commission for informational purposes. And of course, if the planning commission ever wants to call this up, they, they may and that, you know, it's a conditional use permit, which means it's, it's conditional. If they don't comply with the conditions, the planning commission has the authority to revoke the CUP, um, or add, subtract, or revise conditions of approval.
Apply some heat, yeah.
Right, and, sorry, go ahead.
I'm, I don't wanna step over any toes here, but, uh, I wanna just preface, you're thinking of, of the previous review that we had with, um, Ojai Rancho Inn. So, think about it in two parts. The first part was, and this, I would, I would wager fairly heavily that this is almost verbatim. Reason why is when this was coming to you, to this body for review, it was simply as an informational piece. At one point, I think it was the second review that we had, we recognized that, that in good faith, they had actually corrected the, the issues that had come up and they had been working with the neighbors and they become really kind of, uh, a pillar for that community versus what had been going on previous.
Right.
Fair assessment.
Mm-hmm.
So, in that second meeting, it was identified that the commission made a recommendation and it was carried over at by majority, if not all four of you, to schedule a future meeting, which then had a basically publicly noticed...
Consider removing the requirement.
All the conditions.
Yeah.
The, the way in which this condition was written, it didn't allow for modifications at that point. It was really just, hey, let's check in with these conditions and let's make sure that they're doing what they've, they've identified that they're gonna do. Let's make sure they're following through.
Right.
Right? This body recognized what had, had gone on previously in the good faith and took it a step further and said, "Let's really look at these conditions. Let's do a public notice and really kind of, um, take a closer look at that." And that's where you ended up pausing this condition through that goo, good faith effort. So, it's a two, it's a two-part piece. Really, the first one was, hey, these are all the events that they've done. Yeah, the first year, there was a couple of hiccups, but they resolved them. Second year, nothing, right? They had, they had smoothed all that out.
Right.
So, the current resolutions, the two separate resolutions, provide for the same protocol?
The first part. You had identified the second part. You had taken an effort to say, "Let's take this to a public hearing and evaluate condition number twenty-three."
Okay, okay.
It was one of the, it was one of the conditions as well as another.
Understand that part. When you say the first part, the second part. The first part is...
Information.
We'll, we'll, we'll be reporting...
Correct.
For a couple of years.
Well, it doesn't put an "is" to it.
We suspended the requirement for reporting...
Yeah.
After the second year.
Correct.
Is that first part in both these resolutions?
Yes.
Yeah, number twenty-four.
I thought so, I thought so.
And it does, it does state that a meeting may be necessary and that could be based on the number of comments, concerns, the public.
But, but that doesn't bring it to the PC automatically.
No.
That, that leaves it in the hands of staff to decide whether or not to bring it to us.
Correct.
That's correct.
That's absolutely correct.
However, staff is forwarding it to the planning commission and so then the planning commission can call them up, call it up if they so choose.
It is required that we get the information?
Right.
It is required, yes.
Yes, yes.
And we can decide what to do with it.
Yeah, and the reason I bring it up is, you know, obviously the current owners are great, the current management's fantastic, but they sell the property, these go with the property. They go with the new management. So, I know that we had some sort of condition in it with the Rancho regarding ownership changes. I'd like to see what that might be. But, that also, this section number twenty-four allows us to review this new ownership and what they're doing. And if we get a lot of complaints, then we can certainly revoke, revoke the conditional use permit.
You always can. Even without a condition in here, because it's a conditional use permit.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
And, um, staff can look in to find out what the condition is that, and you just mentioned it.
Yeah, let's double-check that.
But this does not have, have any special conditions. If, um, I was thinking, uh, that when a CUP, when a property does change hands though... No, if it, if it was a, I'm sorry, if the, if the, if it was no longer the Capri and it turned into the ABC, um, you know, hotel, then it would be, there would be a process by which we would transfer the CUP. The CUP can't go away, but we, we just transfer it and it's a, it's a ministerial process. So, anyway, sorry, just...
Okay.
I won't ignore that.
Um, another quick question. Attachment A, page eight of fourteen. On the very bottom says, "Note, events shall be, shall specifically exclude arrivals and departures during peak commute hours. No event on weekdays will begin or end during the periods of seven AM to nine AM or four PM to six PM. Failure to comply, da-da-da." My question is, how do we monitor this? Is it through the events that they send to you?
Correct. Yeah, those hours are specific and they're identified as a part of the peak periods that have been identified within, um, the AQP four policy.
Are we gonna be, are we gonna be walking and monitoring that event while it's happening?
He, here's, here's the way in which it's get, it gets monitored. They identify the hours. Those hours have to be outside of those, those specified hours, the peak period hours.
But they could technically, I mean, not that these, this management will do it, but they could theoretically just put in any time they want, cause it's just a report, doesn't really...
Theoretically, they could.
Yeah, okay.
And if they're caught, then there's...
I got you, and not, these guys wouldn't do it at all.
Yeah.
Future owners.
We're assuming good faith, right? Until we don't.
Future bad guys.
Future, yeah, that's right.
I, I have a question about, uh, going back to the, to the parking lot between Casa Ojai and, uh, and the Hummingbird. This parking lot in between is owned by the landlord of, um, of the Hummingbird. Is, who owns Casa Ojai? It's not...
Somebody else, I think. Okay.
So, he's, has, he has no interest, he or she has no interest in renting that, that parking lot out on a per day, day basis to...
Maybe, maybe no one has even asked. We, we don't know that.
Casa Ojai, yeah.
Okay, there's... I think we're about done, you think?
With questions?
Thank you very much for your time.
Oh, sorry.
Unless there's...
I apologize. Last, last, last question. So, I apologize and...
Talked by the bell.
I wrote this down and I, I didn't bring it up. Someone had mentioned, um, that at times there's, um, at the Capri, there can be loud gatherings of folks in the, in the back area after like, you know, ten PM after the event, um, and the noise levels are loud. And when folks call in to complain, the phone doesn't get answered. Do you guys have people there monitoring that sort of thing after ten PM?
Yes, we have an after-hours, uh, we have some... We, you're, yeah, we have a twenty-four hour after-hours.
Excuse me? We'll ask the community to keep decorum while the applicants are speaking, thank you.
We have a twenty-four hour, uh, after-hours call number that guests can call and that the residents can call as well. We've resolved several noise complaints from neighbors in the past by having the onsite attendant who works after hours go out to the poolside area and ask that the people who are at the pool keep their noise levels down and within the city of Ojai noise ordinance levels. So, we definitely have somebody onsite responding to those.
Do you have pool hours?
That number is a different number from the hotel's number, though? If somebody had a complaint and they called the hotel...
The number rolls over to our after-hours contact.
And does the pool have hours? Does, do you close the pool at a given time?
Yeah. Yeah, between, uh, the, the pool is open between eight and ten.
Okay, so, how does the pool get shut down?
Um, it gets regulated to make sure that no one is in there after hours. And then there's a keypad on the, on the gates.
You have a roving guard that clears the pool, or...
Yes.
Okay, so the whole area around the pool gets shut off? I mean, no guests are...
It has to be fenced in.
Yeah, it's fenced, fenced in, yeah.
Okay, so, no one is left around the pool area after ten?
Um, technically, no. I mean, I'm sure that there's been incidences where hotel guests have been lingering and using the pool and they're quiet and they're allowed to continue to use it, but in general, no. The pool hours are strict between eight and ten.
Also, we have other guests staying at the property and so we wanna ensure that everybody respects our quiet hours are from ten PM until eight AM. And so, we do have our after-hours person there to ensure that the property is quiet and nice for everybody else staying there as well as our neighbors.
So, you have permanent overnight staff onsite?
Yes, we do.
Both places?
Yes, yes. So, I'm sorry if your call didn't get answered, but it must have maybe, I don't know if she missed it or it went to voicemail, but usually she's really good about calling people back. And if you guys want, we can give you the direct after-hours phone number and make sure that you guys can always reach, that you guys can always reach somebody.
And Lucas, have we received any complaints from the city in that regard?
So, you know, when we had these TUPs come forward, one of the, one of the things that we had going on in the beginning was a courtesy, um, notice that was going out, uh, to make these residents aware of upcoming events. Not required through the TUP, but it was something that we were asking for them to do to identify that, yes, there were events gonna be happening in this, like for instance, the lawn area.
Right.
Um, closest, so...
I think that's where the...
There, there were, I will, I will admit, in the beginning, there were complaints that were coming in, but they were, from what I could tell, they were doing, um, everything they could to address some of these situations that were coming up. So, as we had future TUPs come in, we weren't getting complaints that were coming in at that point. I'm not sure if it was a resident had moved or if, if it had been addressed, but I'm, I'm leaning towards it being addressed.
Okay.
And also, if I can add that for the Rancho CUP, we did have a, a neighbor come and speak in opposition to that CUP. And now that neighbor has written us a letter of support for our CUP cause they're really happy with how we've been really respectful to the neighborhood.
That's true.
Awesome, very cool.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think, I think we're through.
Thank you for standing for so long. Larry has a question, I don't know if you wanna...
Are you suggesting we reopen the public hearing? What do you think?
Yes.
Okay. Come on up. We'll reopen the public hearing for Mr. Steingold.
Um, thank you. I would suggest that you stay with the one-year review like you had for the Rancho. It wasn't a big deal. They came here, they said this was great, everybody said this was wonderful, resolved this, done, moved on. They don't have to come back until whenever. Reducing the sound decibel level opens up, it sets precedent. It opens up a can of worms for every C1 property next to a residential property because now they can come and say, "Oh, they received forty-five decibels. I wanna do it." The Love Cafe, we went through all that with the next-door neighbor, decibels, amplified sound, lower the decibels. Don't have to, why? You just gave them forty-five from sixty-five. You shouldn't open it up the can of worms. It will just be a horror show. Because now you're approving, it sets precedent. And they go, "Oh, because they're setting precedent by you approved the Rancho for the same thing," which is great. Now, they're here for the other two motels for the same thing that the Rancho was in and they're going, "See, you approved it for that. Now, we wanna approve it for this." And you're gonna go, "Okay, it worked there, let's do it here." Same thing with the sound. So, I implore you, do not change the decibel level.
Question for staff then, thank you, Mr. Steingold. Question for staff, what is the limit right now on the Rancho? Is it sixty-five?
Yes, the Rancho was not altered or wasn't revised in a condition of rule.
The standard, the standard noise standard.
That's correct.
It is, the only, the only, um, and, you know, we, there was quite a bit of discussion in regards to this and we went round and round...
Yeah.
And landed on...
I didn't remember us lowering it.
No, not low, well, there was discussion on it, but at the end of the day, it stayed at sixty-five. The one condition that was added, I recall, as having that conversation and the commission agreeing, is that the decibel readings are taken from the edge of the property versus whoever's complaining, you typically take it from their, edge of their property if they're complaining for that. So, it could be a residential site and you're taking it from really where they're complaining, um, the edge of that property. It's not from the house, from the edge of the property.
So, like in this situation with the Capri, it would be from the, the back...
The other side of the wall.
Yeah, the back parking lot of the, uh...
Oh, of the Ranger Station, yeah.
That's where you take the reading.
Correct.
It's at the, it's the edge of this parcel.
Edge of the parcel.
That's all that, that's all that really the, the city can control, I think.
Yeah.
Does, does the forty-five decibel, I'm looking at page seven and fourteen, the, uh, forty-five decibel after nine, is that in the statute or is that...
No, the statute is sixty-five and fifty-five, right?
So, where do...
Right, and this is fifty-five and forty-five instead of forty-five and sixty-five.
Instead of fifty-five and sixty-five?
So, the, the loud, the, the, the greater decibels is allowed for a certain time of the day, is allowed in the C1 to go to sixty-five. The condition would be that it go only to fifty-five, which is what it's allowed in the residential zone. So, it's the ten-decibel difference.
But that's not a condition that we put on Rancho.
That's correct.
But was that considered residential?
The reason it was put in here is because of the, of the location of these, these sites adjacent to the residential. The Hummingbird more so than, than the Capri because the Capri has, um, the parking lot behind it.
A small, small parking.
The, the strip of parking and also, that's more permanent than their landscaping, but they also do have significant, um, landscaping buffer. that's more permanent than their landscaping, but they also do have significant landscaping buffer.
Okay, so the 45 doesn't show up anywhere in our statutes. That was, we created that for this.
No, 45 and 55, because it depends on the time of day. 45 and 55 is for residential zones. And it's suggested.
Not for C1.
Not for C1, it's for residential zones, but it's suggested in here.
Because it's a budding.
Because it's a budding.
Okay, so 45, is that in the statutes for nine o'clock? Is, is the, does that tie together, the timing?
For, yes, the, well, the timing here is. Um, my, my, um, no, I, I think in our zone, in the municipal code, it's 10 o'clock.
Yes, that's correct. It's 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Right.
At 55 decibels, 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM at 45 decibels for residential.
Right, and so this is, this is specific and altered for project specific because of its location. So it's not just the decibels, but also the time of day.
It's mirroring the residential standards.
Thank you.
And also, and also there's a resident, or there's a member of the public that wanted to speak since you opened up the public.
And one online.
We'll have.
And one online.
May I ask, before, before the, before the member of the public speaks, and this is a question about the logarithmic nature of these measures. Is it fair to say that 45 decibels is one one hundredth, it's 10? So if it's from 55 to 65, it's 10 times. Right. Between 45 and 55, is it? It's also 10 times. So it's, so it's 100 times. If you went from 45 to 65, that would be 100 times. So one one hundredth of what is, of, is doable in any other place in town. But nowhere, nowhere is 65 allowed after nine or 10:00 PM. After 10:00 PM. After 10:00 PM.
Right, and so this is, this is limiting the noise level at nine o'clock.
And cutting it down by a factor of 10.
Nine PM, correct.
At nine instead of the normal 10.
Instead of 10, but also again.
Mirroring what's currently resident.
Because it's a C1, it would be 60, it would be 55.
Okay, let's, okay, let's assume we're in a residential neighborhood here, and so all we're really changing from the statute is that we would go down to 45 decibels at nine instead of 10.
Yes.
But that's for the residential zone property.
Right, because they're in the middle of it.
The condition, Chair Quillis, the, the condition is, is for them to abide by it in this C1 property.
Yeah, this is a special.
Correct.
Noise ordinance for C1 property that abuts residential property.
It's a, it's a special condition for this commercial property that it butts residential.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, so I want to know what's gonna happen with the traffic, with, with the residents trying to get in and out when the Hummingbird's parking lot is on Golden West. So when they're having an event going on there, how are we supposed to get in and out?
I'm sorry, if the, the Hummingbird's parking lot is on Golden West?
Yes. The entrance, and yes, it's on Golden West.
Okay.
It's on the entrance to Golden West.
Mm-hmm, so.
Do, do people not normally go in and out from Golden West to the parking lot?
Of course we do, but there's not events going on right now, so there's, you know, not that traffic buildup.
Have, have you been, have, have you been in the area where the hotel's at capacity and that parking lot's full?
Yes.
Is it, is it a problem to get in and out at that, that point?
I have not noticed anything, but if they're holding different markets during the day and doing all different things, like they say, you know, there's, there's gonna be, you know, it, it's gonna be different. It's not gonna be the same as it is now, obviously, because they're bringing in more and more and different events. So, yeah, I mean, obviously, for a lot of events, they're not gonna have enough parking. People are gonna be parking on Golden West, no matter what anybody tries to do. But my thing is, is getting in and out when there's cars going in and out of the parking lot on Golden West. That's, that's number one. Number two, I'm sorry, I don't know your name. Okay, she had mentioned about how pre-COVID, they had swim aerobics going on three times a week. And I was part of that, you know, my husband and I went to the group. But it wasn't put on through the hotel, it was put on through the Bryant Street Gym, and Trussa ran the classes. And we weren't allowed to park in their parking lot, so we had to park on Golden West. And also, I mean, I walked, but the other people that drove had to park on Golden West. And then also, you know, they had promised that the temperature would be a certain temperature, and it wasn't. And we're paying and Trussa's paying.
The temperature of the pool.
Of the pool, I'm sorry, of water. I'm sorry. I'm tired.
That would be hard to control, yeah, okay.
I'm sorry. You know, and then we had music, it was after nine, we had music out there, it wasn't very loud. But because the people that were staying at the hotel would complain, you know, about the music and about the people being in the pool. And it wasn't till after nine. So, you know, I'm just worried that that stuff's gonna go on again. I mean, and then Trussa, we weren't allowed back in after COVID to resume the classes. So they're being held somewhere else. But because of the noise, so that's what makes it interesting to me is they're saying that there's not gonna be noise, you know. Well, there is gonna be noise. The people at the Hummingbird complained when we were there. So, without their thing, I have one more thing. Okay, I don't remember what it was, but.
When you were, when you were up here the first time, and I, I didn't get a chance to mention it then, you were talking about people having ADUs in their yards and more and more traffic.
Yes.
I sympathize with your concern. I think everybody in the city does, but it's out of our hands.
I understand that.
Talk to your state legislator.
No, I totally understand.
Who took the parking requirements away.
When we bought this house, I mean, we bought it years ago as a rental, and then we decided to live in it. But back then, you couldn't put an ADU. They, and when we redid our house, they said you have to leave a one car garage, like, you have to leave room for one car. Period, end of story. You can't turn your garage into anything.
It's changed.
I know, I understand that it changed. But so many people are now adding those ADUs that it's bringing in double, triple the amount of cars in the neighborhood, so.
I wish, I wish there was something the city could do about that.
I wish so too. But I just didn't want to, I don't want to add to it. You know, I really don't want to add to what's been, you know, how things have been changing in the neighborhood. So that's all I ask.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chair, can we just offer an opportunity for the applicant to respond if they'd like? Because we opened that back up to public comment.
Yeah, we got one more hand raised in the back there.
Okay.
And online.
And, oh, and online.
Hi, thank you. My name's Amber Young. I apologize for not being here for the first portion of public comment.
I know you.
Childcare delays. I wanted to say thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I was quite grateful for the second opportunity. Thank you very much for the time. I'm a resident on Golden, I'm a resident on Gregory Street. My front yard looks at the back of the Hummingbird, and I also own a restaurant on Ojai Avenue. At Sam's Place at, at 308 East Ojai. Oh, sorry, I'm a little nervous. And I just, I have, my, my concerns are a little bit twofold, and after hearing the in-depth questioning and the excellent responses and considerations from applicant, as a resident, I feel slightly a little more comfortable. Our neighborhood is one of the last kind of sleepy areas left in Ojai. We are family. Neighborhood, we all wave hi to each other. I've got 11-month-old son who goes to sleep someday, hopefully at 8:00, at 8:00 PM. Fingers crossed. Anywho, and the concern about having people, event traffic is different than hotel traffic. Hotel traffic comes, they park, they stay, they leave, maybe they go to dinner, maybe they come back. That's different than in and out. I also am very confused, maybe, and I didn't read the staff report as thoroughly as I wish I would have, about where the Hummingbird, they would put a street fair market, if not in the parking lot. There's not a lot of property as there is at the Capri, so that's for you guys to decide. But I also have concerns as a business owner, because the financial ecosystem of Ojai is very fragile. There's only so many bodies who can come into the valley every weekend. And with more and more hotels, I know that Lavender just applied for their, for their bar permit, and it's more and more hotel, now hotels, congratulations, but used to be motels. Keeping people on property and then also asking additional people from outside of the property to come onto their property. They are removing bodies that would be frequenting other places in town. And that has a broad effect. I often talk to other restaurant owners and I say, hey, how was your weekend? How'd it go? And oftentimes, especially in the spring and in the fall, it's, you know, slow, but, you know, there was a big wedding in town. Wedding guests come, they go to a rehearsal dinner on Friday night, they spend the day by the pool, they get ready for the wedding. They're at the, they're at the wedding reception on Saturday night, having a fantastic time, and it's wonderful. They're not coming into town. And that is something, and then you add markets to it, now there's another reason to not come into town. And so I would just not ask that you don't allow it, just perhaps consider limiting the number. So there's a little bit more, I hate to say, use that term, but meat on the bone for the rest of us so that we can have a vibrant and thriving economic community here in Ojai. Thank you very, very much for your time. I know it's a long night. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. I know that the, there's been discussion about limiting the marketplace that take, marketplaces that take place in town. And. I don't think we're entirely through with that question. Well, I, I was gonna say, I don't think we are. And, and the question is a good one, and that is, can we let anyone who's got a, essentially a parking lot extend Main Street? And allow it to be used for a marketplace?
Discussion.
Yeah, I. And what's the impact on our. It's a reasonable question. I think it's also a reasonable question to ask if that event did not take place. There was, I sense an implication here that if that event didn't take place on that hotel property, that all of those people would be in town buying from other businesses. And I wonder if that hotel didn't have that event, would any of those people have been here at all?
I think you have one more person online.
Yeah, we do still have one more online. Sherry, why don't you bring up our other commenter?
They're up.
Teal?
Yes, hi, it's Teal Rowe. I'm a county resident, and I thank you for taking the time to open up the public comments again. I'm late to the meeting, and I just think that this is such a nebulous discussion. And the staff report and all the time that went into it, I appreciate your time. I do know that this decision is not out of your hands, this is in your hands. And with the nebulous conversation, I was wondering if anybody talked to anybody in Solvang, in Santa Barbara, or Los Alamos to find out what's going on there with the same, it's the same company, which is online, which they are asking for. I also agree with Larry Steingold about the decibels and the sound. And when I watch these meetings, it's like the subject matter sort of sways like a big eucalyptus tree, and then it's all about decibels, which I understand that, I agree with everything that Larry said. The other thing I'm very concerned about is the cumulative effects of traffic, the tourism, the noise for the neighbors, and the disruption of our daily lives in Ojai through those cumulative effects. The neighbors, I didn't hear the public comments, but my heart goes out to all of you in Golden West, at the Mormon Church track, and everybody over on Gridley, and essentially everybody in the valley that's going to have to be dealing with what happens when somebody takes a hotel and turns it into an event venue. Thank you for listening to me tonight, and take care.
Thank you, ma'am. Done?
Chair, if we could, if they, just invite the applicants, since we opened it back up, if they'd like to respond, give them that opportunity.
Okay, yeah, they never had the, the chance to present the case themselves. If you have anything else you want to say, everybody else has spoken.
Thank you for your extra time. So I just want to say that we're not trying to be an, an events venue at the Capri and the Hummingbird at all. We don't have the capacity for it or the patience or the energy for it. All we want to do is have some simple events. We don't want to have markets. We want to have movie screenings, workshops, you know, just very simple things that we've noted before, like yoga classes and things of that nature.
So marketplaces are not part of the events that you.
We didn't propose that, no.
It's actually, sorry, I wanted to just make sure that, that we're, that everything is on the table, and it is part of the application to have fundraisers, pop-up markets, and seasonal events in the annual section?
Yes.
Well, sorry about that, I didn't know. I'm, I'm happy to take pop-up markets off of that. It's, it's not something that I, I feel that we're interested in.
What would a seasonal event be then?
A seasonal event would probably be more of a workshop or, I don't know.
It says up to 180 people. That's not a workshop.
That's the winter festival.
Oh, it's the Rancho's winter festival.
Yeah, that's at the Rancho for the winter festival.
But that's what you're asking for here, so I'm, I'm concerned about the number of events and the size of these events. The weekly things, great, you do, you really aren't impacting the neighborhood. But when you get to 150 monthly events with live music and four annual events up to 180 people, you are impacting not only the neighborhood, but the town.
Yes, sorry.
Are these tables part of the application? These tables that are in the admin report?
This information came from the project descriptions, yes, from the applicant. And weddings to boot, 15 or 12 or whatever it turns out to be.
We don't have a number of attendees for the weddings. Is that also up to 150?
No, 120 people, she said it before.
If I could respond to that initial question.
I don't see it in black and white.
Yeah, she said it, I, she did, okay.
So an annual event would be, we've had this in the past, a fundraiser for the Land Conservancy. And they're bringing their donors in, they're bringing the community in, and we want to be able to host as many people that we possibly can. Or we've collaborated with OJ Film Society in the, in the past, having a movie screening for the community. Those are the more, we want to be able to host as many people as possible with, without compromising traffic and parking. That's, so those are the more impactful, larger events that comes with annual events.
And also, like at the Rancho, we don't use all of the events that we're allotted for, and we don't plan to use every single one of these events. We, again, don't have the capacity to do so, so we're willing to compromise if you guys want to do less monthly events. We're, we're, we're happy to have the 12 weddings allowed per year. We could do way less monthly events if that makes you guys feel more comfortable.
Dropping the pop-up markets? I think you just said that was okay.
We could drop that, yeah.
Pop-up dinners? What's a pop-up dinner?
Like when we, if we wanted to invite a chef to come and, to host a dinner for our guests or, you know, people that want to come and stay.
Cooking class?
I mean, we don't have the facilities for a cooking class, but.
I don't think so, but.
I, I, I am glad to hear that you are willing to compromise on some of these numbers because I, I think they really are excessive.
And I think that we just want to throw out numbers out there and just.
You never get what you don't ask for.
Exactly. And, you know, I'm sorry that you guys had a bad experience with the water aerobics. It was during COVID. And, and also, it's kind of shows how we want to collaborate with local businesses to provide them with a space if they need it. She reached out, she really needed a space. We wanted to make it work, and it did work for some time. And then I think during COVID, things just got wonky, gas bills got high with keeping the pool temperatures at a certain temperature during a certain time. And we didn't have that extra parking lot yet at that time, so if we were to do that sort of thing again, we would make sure that people coming for that class would park in that extra parking lot.
Okay.
And, and I know, I think you addressed this earlier, but I just wanted to ask it again. The purpose of doing this, I mean, I get. The purpose of doing this, um, I mean, I get one part of it, but you had mentioned something earlier, and I just wanted you to restate it. What is the purpose of, of you doing these events at this, at these hotels?
Well, as Shelter Social Club is more of a community-forward company, our ethos has always been to create an experience rather than just a place to stay. So we wanted to also, you know, naturally have that at our sister properties as well.
I didn't, I didn't remember this identification of this social club when we were doing the first venue. Is it the same group that organized all of those events?
Yeah, it's my company, Shelter Social Club, yeah.
I see.
And so we like to bring diversity to the community, and so that it's a, a way for locals to be able to experience culture in Ojai without having to leave town.
I'll tell you, um, the, the marketplaces, from my standpoint, have the biggest, um, impact on the community of, of...
When I look back now, I don't see marketplace in here. I see pop-up dinners.
Pop-up markets.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, that, that, the pop-up markets became a problem a while back, when we were having a hearing about what was going on at the women's club. And the local businesses objected to having the pop-up markets show up in town for one day and not have to pay the, uh, local taxes and keep a place open seven days a week, and all of the rest of that. So, to me, that's a problem here, too.
Problem with taking out pop-up markets?
They said they would.
I just wanted to add a note, um, about our ethos being more than just a place to stay and a, a place for the community, and part of the events that we plan, another part of the vetting process for our clients, is that they work with local vendors, and that they get their, they work with caterers that are here in Ojai, um, as a, an effort to support our local businesses. So I just wanted to kind of counter the point that if things are happening at the hotel, it's not benefiting the surrounding community, because we often work with caterers that own businesses here in Ojai, and other vendors participate. Whether it's like a coffee cart, that's a, a local startup, you know, coffee shop, bringing a mobile coffee cart to a farewell brunch as part of a wedding, or one of our local restaurants that's branching out and starting a catering division, and we're supporting that business in, in helping to grow their revenue and diversify their revenue beyond the four walls of their, of their retail space. So I just wanted to add that, that that's definitely a big part of what we're trying to accomplish in hosting these events.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So, anybody else out there, Sheri, that wishes to speak?
No.
All right. Going once, going twice? All right. The public comment portion of this public hearing is now and forever finished. And we're coming back to deliberation, then. Now, we talked about eliminating pop-up markets, but setting a limit on 120 on weddings?
Attendees.
Attendees.
And 12 weddings instead of, the original request...
It doesn't say, it doesn't have a number here.
Okay, but let me, let me explain. Okay, in, in the application stuff in the back, it's, it referenced 20 weddings. And then on page seven in the staff report, it's at 15 weddings. And staff has also suggested bringing that down to 12, and the applicant was amenable to that.
Seven of 11 on the staff report says up to 15.
Right. But they're, okay, so staff has asked for it to come down to 12, and the applicant is amenable to that.
Okay.
So 12, no more than 12 weddings with, and I'd like this written in, 120 attendees, limited to, which is what the applicant said they'd do.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Murphy, um, I, I have to have you repeat that. So this was the weddings?
Wedding part.
And it was weddings, and it was 12 weddings per year at 120?
To 120.
Yes.
And on the four annual deleting pop-up markets?
So far. Just saying.
Okay. Did we all agree on those two changes?
What about, uh, no live bands? Sounds like they don't, they don't even...
Well, I, you know, if the decibel count, I, I...
Yeah. I think, I think we've been through this a couple of times already. Whether it's, whether it's live or recorded, whether it's amplified, which if, if it's recorded, it's going to be amplified, um, or not, we have a noise standard.
Right.
So really, what we need to get to the discussion of is, do we do it as a commercial, or do we do it residential?
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with residential.
Me, too.
I think we can reexamine it. I think it can be part of the condition number 24, where it's part of that annual review, where we reexamine the decibel levels. And if it's a hindrance to the business, then it's something that we can look at.
I think we should have a demonstration of what, 45 decibels is 15?
Well, that's in residential areas today, so it's...
Yeah, two people walking down the street probably are talking to each other, probably 45 decibels. And a bus driving by is probably 75 or 80 decibels.
Yeah, that's why those things are usually, uh, a decibel level for a certain period of time. What do we have in, in the code about that? Do we have time periods, or do we, we have average decibel level over a period of time?
There is a period of time, it looks like...
I can't remember the exact wording, yeah.
I can't either at the moment, but I can look into it for you.
Yeah, so it's like, just, just on, off, off the cuff, it's one in five minutes. That's typically what, what the decibel, so if it's going over, it's got to go over for longer than a minute. It's not just a flash in the pan, it's got to be longer. Sustained noise is really what it's talking about.
I, I, I agree with Jamie. You know, I, this is the...
I'm calling it noise, but really it's sound.
Numerous times, we've had this discussion over various cases. I still don't know what 55 sounds like. So I, if, it can be arranged at some point in time.
Would you like to use that?
Sure.
I think, hold on. From the demonstration's standpoint, we don't know if that's been calibrated. There's too many factors at, at, at risk here.
We're also, we're also right here in a room, as opposed to being next door, listening to what's happening next door.
Exactly.
It's, so it's, you can't...
It's not quite the same.
Right.
Not, not a good demonstration.
Okay.
So they're not going to do that.
Jamie, you and I will have to go to an event. Yeah, I think, a field trip, yes, okay.
And you need to be next door to the event.
Yes, yes.
You need to be off-site, not, not in it.
Right.
Next door.
Okay, so I think that what I said before, I mean, there are two different approaches to this. There's the 65 decibel for commercial, there's the 55 decibel limit for residential. They're asking for it to be changed from 55 to 65.
They're asking to be held to the same noise standard as the residential.
As a commercial, as a commercial.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I think that the neighborhood deserves to have it be a neighborhood limit, separate from the time, nine o'clock or 10 o'clock. We can get to that, but...
At least one of these motels, the neighborhood is really Ojai Avenue, it's not the residential.
I, I drove pa, I, I drove the neighborhood. There are neighbors behind the Capri. There just are. The, the distance...
The wall that's on the other side of the...
Yes, I went back there. It, it's, you can park a couple of cars. I mean, it's not a big distance, and then you've got the neighbors' backyards.
It's definitely, the residential property is definitely closer to both these hotels than the residential properties, than, than any residential properties are to the Rancho, other than the ones that are directly across the street. But even, even then, it's across Ojai Avenue and down a bit before you get to residence.
These kids' bedrooms are 30 feet from...
I don't know, I haven't, haven't looked at that, but...
Gone over. Maybe 40 feet, I'm not a good judge.
Well, but we dealt with it on Love Cafe as well, and there were residential, not many, but there were residential, um...
Yes. But what, what, did, did we change the noise standard for Love Social?
No, we didn't. We had all other kinds of conditions, like the, um, noise monitor and pointing the...
And pointing the speakers away and all that.
And the speakers were out in front by the street, by signal. They weren't...
But the noise monitoring was taking place at the edge of the property?
Yes.
Just like it would be here.
But at the Capri, the, the PA system is going to be within, I don't know, I'm guessing, 30 or 40 feet of these kids' bedrooms.
Whatever the width of that parking lot is.
Yes, yes.
Yes, so if we require that the speakers all point toward Ojai Avenue?
Yeah.
That's what we did at Rancho.
Yeah, I think that's good.
I think that's important to do. I'm not sure it's sufficient. I'm, I'm, I'm still arguing for the 55 decibel limit.
I think that's fair. I think we can put it as part of the condition where it's reviewed every year.
Yes.
If it's, if it's doing fine, and...
Would, would anybody be amenable to halfway between? Halfway between the commer, the normal commercial standard?
No, because, like Larry, like Larry said...
I agree with Larry, Larry Steingold, who, you know, are we, are we going to go and negotiate with each of these and start splitting hairs?
No.
Everyone's going to be looking for precedent. And so now we have a precedent for 60.
And that's going to happen, and that's going to happen if we do anything other than the noise standard for the zoning district that the parcel in question occupies.
Yes.
I think if it butts a neighborhood, it's different.
So if we go to 45 and 55, we're making an exception. And then the next, the next time somebody comes in, the neighbors will ask for that exception again.
Residents?
The residents. The neighbors, the residential neighbors. The voters.
You know, the, the council responds to voters, and, uh, the council can change whatever we do.
But either, either we make this a special case, in which case, somebody is going to want every future case to be a special case, or we stick to what's in the code now and see if it's a problem. And if it's a problem, we'll know because of complaints. That's what we did.
And what's in the code now is 65, right?
Is 65 and 55.
65 and 55.
Commissioner, might I, might I add in a little bit of flavor and commentary here? Throughout the last couple of years, Ojai Rancho and has been taking readings for their events. Now, granted, those events have been following a lot of the conditions that we're seeing here, that have been peppered into here, including the speakers that face towards Ojai Avenue and not towards the residence. When they're taking readings, and they're taking readings throughout these events, it's typically as a baseline before the event starts, during the event, and they're adjusting it as it, as it comes about, right? Those readings are reading in between 59 and 61, um, decibels. And that's at the north property line. I'm asking specific areas for those decibel readings. If you're putting in a condition, and you're agreeing to that condition at 55, almost guaranteed that it's going to be difficult for them to meet that. That almost makes it to the point where it's going to be a violation, we're going to be dealing with issues to a condition that really should be following the, the C1 standard, which is the commercial standard of 65 versus the residential standard, which is 55.
You, but that is what the staff is recommending in here.
Yes, and I, I think it's done an error, to be fair. Just to be fair.
And, and I have to say, I understand the concern. I live about three quarters of a mile from here, up in that direction. And I can hear Libby Bowl music at night, and I don't like all of it. Okay? It's not all fogey music, if you will. But, but the fact is, we all kind of live here, and, and we have noise standards that say, this, anything louder than this is, by the city's judgment, unreasonable. Therefore, you can't do it. And if we, if we do anything different from that, then every future case, somebody's going to want to be different the same way.
That's true.
And, and we're going to wind up negotiating noise standards for every new case. And I really would hate to see that happen.
I doubt that we'll have a lot of cases where events are being planned within neighborhoods.
Within?
Neighborhood residences.
Or adjacent to neighborhood residences, you mean, not within? I don't know. We had, we had Love Social, that's right there packed exactly, without even a wall between them and a residence.
Which we proposed.
And...
Well, that was, wasn't it VMU, wasn't it Village, wasn't it Village?
Need for quiet, but, boy, we start jittering every one of these cases, I'm, I'm not, not happy with it.
Um, considering that the Hummingbird is the, that's the problem, I think, because that one is probably most in residential versus a Capri. And I'm also trying to figure out...
It's a little different, yeah.
And trying to figure out how these events are going to take place, that really all they have is that little front, little section where they got a little bit of grass, and then the rest is a parking lot. Other than the overflow parking, which they said is not going to be used for events, which I think we need to make as a condition.
I, yeah, I think we need to be sure that the overflow parking is not used for events. It's used for overflow parking.
What kind of an event would you have in there? It's just a mess.
Well, so the question is, is that, okay, so if they're going to use that little area, that little piece of grass for events up to 150 people, it's obviously going to flow into the parking lot. So where do the, where do the cars go there? So they're going to have to...
That was one of my questions. Are the proprietors at the hotel, or the, the Hummingbird, or the Capri, going to tell people, registered guests, you must move your car, and you must move it down the street?
Yeah, I'm, I'm almost wondering if the Hummingbird is not conducive to events like this. I think the Capri could do it. I don't think the Hummingbird is set up for this type of stuff. It's just not.
The Capri is the one that has the more difficult trek, using the off-site part.
Yeah, but the Capri has that backyard. It's also, it's also a further distance from the residential houses.
Yes, yes.
So it can, it can house these type of events, you know, easier.
That's true.
Than the Hummingbird. It seems the Hummingbird is just a, it's just got a lot of, a lot of issues associated with, just how it's positioned. It was built as a motel, so I don't know.
Well, they both were, but...
True. I mean, that's, I, I mean, I don't, I don't, I can't see an event at the Hummingbird where they got 180 people. That's just, that just doesn't seem like, how that would work.
I don't think you get 80 in there.
I mean, I drove, I drove through it, and literally that little piece of grass, you could put like a couple tables out there. That's about it.
But they, you know, whereas you...
Unless you use the parking lot and move all the registered guests next door.
Right, yeah.
But I don't think we're here to decide how the applicants are going to run their business.
No, 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 I'm, I'm not. I'm just wondering if we think about, do we limit the number of events?
We should certainly adjust.
Limit the number of events at the Hummingbird.
Might I add something here?
Please.
Color commentary once again. You have two resolutions before you that you can act on separately.
Right.
Right.
It's sounding like Capri with some of these modifications added as conditions...
Less of a problem.
Less of an issue, right? Whereas Hummingbird, there are still some things that sound like they need to be worked out, and maybe that's something that you can ask for staff to work with the applicant on and continue it off calendar.
I think that's a really good idea.
Well, you see, I think the.
But I'm only offering that as a suggestion, I'm not saying that that's the action that.
Yeah, and I think, again, I'm sort of leaning towards Larry Steingold's approach on this and that, and and listening to the applicant, their other clients will tell them if if it's too noisy. I'm spending two hundred bucks on this room and, you know, it feels as if, you know, I'm being blown out of my room by the by the sound that's being generated in the in the event space here. And, you know, how would you feel about that? Well, that, you're gonna, if you're the, if you're the proprietor, you're gonna be you're gonna be listening to your your clients who are in the rooms complain, and you're gonna say, gee, we gotta be, we have to crank this down for them. As it it will affect our, you know, you get a few Yelp reviews complaining about that, and it's gonna be difficult to generate the room revenue that we wanna generate, so.
Absolutely, it's the same conversation we had with Hotel Arobar.
But I do like your your suggestion, Lucas, I think these are two separate things, we need to look at them separately, I know they were proposed kind of in the same meeting, you know, but they are two separate, I mean, there's 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 two different design review permits, and there's two different conditional use permits, and there's two separate properties.
Two separate resolutions with similar conditions, but they're not identical.
No, 'cause they're both very unique in how they're gonna, how you can leverage their, you know, the the natural surrounding areas, I guess, I don't know, but they're, you know, the infrastructure of each of them are different, if that makes sense, yeah. Way they're positioned and way they're.
If we were to make a decision tonight, whatever the decision might be, on Capri, and continued the Hummingbird to a date certain, what date certain would you recommend?
I wasn't recommending a date certain, I would take it off calendar. To work through some of these these questions, the first question is, is how is a venue gonna hold a hundred and eighty people? When you've got a pretty small space, I think that needs to be clarified through a site plan, through some more information and clarification.
Yeah, and in traffic patterns, I think someone from the general public brought that up, you know.
The traffic pattern piece.
How's that gonna work, you know, if you got a hundred and eighty people there?
Yes and yes and no, I think probably some clarification on that, I think there's some solutions out there. Um, from a visual standpoint, that helps to provide clarity to the woman that was speaking to it.
That hundred and eighty is four people in each of forty-five cars next door.
Right, yeah, yeah, no, I got you, I got you. Okay, yeah, I mean, you know, I just, I I I listen to the the public and I struggle with some of the infrastructure issues that we have um, in our city, um, and I look at some of these projects that we have coming down the road that have already been approved. Uh, we got a a new hotel, we've got, you know, the Rancho with these expanded events, we got the Lavender Inn expansion, we've got the theater opening, we got the Bryant Street housing, we've got, you know, the Becker housing going on, we got ADUs popping up all over the place, we got a lot of density happening in in our town. And it seems to be all focused downtown in a four square, you know, and what have we got, four square miles?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, which is crazy. And then this is certainly gonna add to the intensity of those two locations, you know, it's not gonna bring in less people. That's for sure.
No.
And it's the reason why it's a conditional use permit.
Right, which I agree, I think that's why we're going through this exercise, and I love the idea of having the annual review, listening to the general public. One of the things I wanted to outline is it does say, I think in here on attachment, oh gosh, is it in the staff report? Actually, I think it's one of the whereas's here, yeah, here it is, attachment A, page three of fourteen. Section B, their proposed events will have been selected so that traffic congestion is avoided. Appropriate parking is available, pedestrian vehicular safety and welfare are provided, and no adverse effects of any type on surrounding property will result. I love that, my big question is, how do we do that? How do we monitor that?
And and is it possible to have no adverse effect of any type?
Right, yeah.
Especially sound.
I think that's unobtainium.
Yeah.
As as a piece of material into our little product here.
So a question for staff, if traffic congestion is an issue, how do we make that, how do we determine that?
I mean, it's gonna be in a, for these events, it's gonna be in a case, case by case scenario, so Ojai Rancho and we all knew there was there was issues regarding traffic.
Right.
And the solution to that was find parking lots that you can then sit these parking spaces, so they're not necessarily in neighborhoods or clogging up Ojai Avenue, right? And then the second piece was, how do you get those individuals from point A to point B?
Right, exactly.
So it became a pedestrian flow piece, right? Those are the two big issues, clearly, clearly here, the Capri is, we're seeing less of a concern with the Capri piece and more of a concern regarding Hummingbird, and I think it's proximity.
Yeah.
It's interesting, too, that Capri happens to be the furthest one away, but seems to have the amenities to support the numbers that we're that we're seeing.
It's two different properties, that's all, yeah.
Yeah, and I, have we had a wedding T U T event at the Hummingbird?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
But the Capri, we've already had some.
Several.
Yeah, I think it can support that type of thing, yeah. So I I think that, I think we loo, we move, make a motion to separate these two.
They're already separated and separate.
Well, I mean, um, to address the Hummingbird at a later date.
Are you suggesting that we move on the Capri and we?
Think we make, yeah, with these conditional approval or conditions, add these, add some of these conditions to the Capri.
So you're suggesting that we move to a, an off calendar date?
For the Hummingbird.
For the Hummingbird.
Yeah.
I'll move that.
Okay. Okay.
But at the same time, what do we do with the noise standard?
Well, do we wanna sep, do we wanna make this a separate motion?
Let's go back and do the noise standard on the Capri, and then we can figure out.
Well, question, can we make this a separate motion where we?
Yes.
Get the Hummingbird off the table?
You, you, yes, you can, and and you have to have a separate motion for the Capri and the Hummingbird anyway, and so if you wanna make a motion right now.
Yeah, so you can make a motion to approve one of the C U Ps and one of the D R Ps.
Well, I'm just making a motion.
Be silent on the other one.
I'm making a motion to, um, move the discussion on the Hummingbird to a date uncertain and to continue the discussion on the Capri.
Second.
Continue the discussion.
Well, we'll.
You can, you can just make a motion.
Decide either case tonight?
Are you saying?
No, I'm saying that we we can, we work toward the Capri solution.
So you can just make a motion about the Hummingbird to start, and then everybody come to an agreement about what we're doing with the Hummingbird.
That's what I wanna do.
So what I heard is that we'd like to continue it to a date uncertain and take Lucas up on the offer for staff to work with the applicant for solutions to some of the concerns or all of the concerns that were expressed by the commission tonight.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Yes, I did.
Okay, discussion? Sherry, let's try a roll call on item two A. That being the Capri.
Bennett?
No, wait, 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 wait.
No, on Humming.
I'm sorry, the Hummingbird, excuse me, right, delaying, delaying the consideration of the Hummingbird.
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Colcy?
Yes.
Okay, now we go back to the Capri.
Now, let's go back to the Capri, okay.
So, the resolution on the Hummingbird.
We're not gonna talk about it.
Is
redundant.
Yet to be looked at.
Yes.
Start over, whatever, call it, okay.
Okay, back to the chart on page four eleven for the Capri.
Four of eleven? Oh, you're you're back to the staff report.
Yeah.
Yep, page four of eleven, yes.
Okay.
Okay, I would like to reduce those monthly and annual events. And or reduce the people allowed, the attendees.
How how different are these two tables from a corresponding set of requirements at Rancho?
So for the Capri, um, they had weekly events, oh wait, I'm sorry, uh, the attendees were different. Did you just ask me how, just how different they were in general, or did you ask about?
If we were to construct a table like the one on page four of eleven for the Rancho, how would it be different from this table?
Uh, the number of attendees would be different for weekly classes, the number of attendees are twenty for weekly um, as opposed to ten to fifty for Capri, for the monthly events, Rancho is fifty, where Capri is fifty to one fifty. For the annual events, Rancho is one fifty, where Capri is up to one eighty. And for, I'm gonna now start with the number of events.
Well, how about the weddings?
Oh, um, weddings, twelve for Rancho and fifteen for Capri.
Was there a number of people?
What was the number of attendees for weddings?
Um, there is not a number for Capri, and I'm not certain about.
No number in either one of these tables, but what was it for Rancho?
Um, I I have to look up the Rancho for you, I don't, I don't have that, okay.
We discussed today, twelve weddings and capped at a hundred and twenty people.
Yes.
And I believe that those were the applicant's.
Numbers, they, that came from the applicant.
I think we could live with that.
They've been floating out there, unless somebody disagrees with that, could we move and put twelve in for the frequency and for weddings?
I wanna let you know that the the number of events is also different for Rancho. You were just talking about number of events, so if I could tell you about that as well as the number of attendees?
No.
So, the number of events is not limited for Capri and the the weekly events, but for Rancho, it was four per week. So it's a weekly event, but limited to four a week, so as opposed to seven days. Um, the monthly events for Capri
Twelve.
Are twelve, and for Rancho, it's six per year.
Six monthly events per year?
Six per year and no more than one per every seven days, and if you wanted more than those six, you'd have to request a T U P. And then for annual events, the Capri is asking for four, and Rancho is two with a request for a T U P for one additional. So they're asking for, um.
A lot more.
Uh, twice, twice as much.
Twice as much.
Twice as much, for the annual and twice as much for the?
Yeah.
The monthly?
Twice as much for monthly, twice as much for annual, and, um, and unlimited for weekly, as opposed to four per week.
I like the Rancho numbers.
I do, too, and they said that that's more than enough.
Who said that?
Applicant.
Well, let's go back, let's go back to the standard that we had for the Rancho then, four weekly events per week.
With the number of attendees.
Up to twenty people.
Mm-hmm.
Six monthly reports, or monthly events with fifty people, T U Ps above that, but no limit on the T U Ps.
Yeah, they can always apply if they need to.
Two annual events up to a hundred and fifty. And twelve weddings up to a hundred and twenty.
Um, I'd like to confirm something that I missed potentially, the monthly events, you said up to fifty, which was Rancho, and then did you wanna go with the six per year? As opposed to the twelve?
Yes.
Six per year, and then what did you say about?
And then T U Ps beyond the six.
Always apply for a T U P.
Okay, just any number if they have to request for T U Ps.
And we took pop-up markets out of the annual events.
You know, I, the the footprint or the design of Rancho and Capri are so different in terms of size of spaces and, um, you know, I I I hate to move off a grid if it was created by the, um, by the applicant and impose something on there that may not fit what each of them needs.
It's a different shaped venue, I'll grant you that, yes.
Remember this, it's, they mentioned that the current, what they currently have at the Rancho is more than enough for what they need it for right now. They're not using all the events, so they always can get a T U P, they can always ask for more.
We can always, yeah.
And we're gonna reevaluate it every year, so if they come back to us and they say, hey, we're.
And we're not gonna review all the T U Ps.
We're doing T U Ps like every other day, you know, we need capacity, do we need more events, that's something that we can certainly discuss, and we can set up another planning, meeting, discussion if needed, but it's something that they can bring up with Lucas. So it's not putting a moratorium on it, we're not telling them they shut it down.
Well, I, here's a question, on the, on weekly, is there any cap to the number of weekly events?
We did, there was not before.
Four per week and and up to twenty per event is what they're having at the Rancho. Please come forward. We're talking about your business here, you should.
Thank you, I appreciate it, so since the Capri is thirty units, it's a bigger property than the Rancho, the Rancho is seventeen. So then the capacity for the numbers of of people that can come are lower. I'm wondering if we agree to the six monthly, but if we can have it higher than fifty, if we can meet in the middle. I think on there, we're asking for, what is it, one?
Fifty to one.
Fifty to one fifty.
So if we can go up to a hundred for the for the monthly, because when we've had film screenings and stuff like that in the past at the Rancho, it's really hard to to meet, to stick to that capacity.
It sounds reasonable to me.
Yeah, sounds reasonable to me.
And also just to to make sure, 'cause we were talking about this, it's okay to strike the pop-up markets, right?
Yes.
All right, cool, all right.
Okay, wow.
So where does this, where does this table appear in the resolution? I don't remember seeing a table per se in the resolution.
There isn't a table in the resolution.
It's covered in a number of conditions.
Yes.
Oh, they all have to be gone through?
The first place that I see it is in attachment A on page eight of fourteen under hours of operation.
Mm-hmm.
But it doesn't include oh, no, it does include patrons.
The, oh. It does, it includes the number of events and the patrons, it's number twenty-two.
Okay.
So twenty-two A I should say up to four weekly events, for example.
This is where, this is where this will be changed.
Yes.
Revised.
Yeah.
You, do we have to do that here and now, or?
No, you already done it.
If we're gonna vote on the resolution, I think we need to make the changes.
Well, so the changes have been made in the chart, and so I can, I can verbally tell you what they're gonna be in condition number twenty-two, if you'd like. I'm just gonna take it from the chart and put it over here.
Okay, do it.
You want me to do it right now? Would you like me to do that?
It'll make Steve happy.
Okay.
I I feel a whole lot better when I see it in writing.
Okay, so.
It'd make Steve happy, that's why we're here.
So so condition of approval, number twenty-two, um, and then it says, A, events for registered guests and non-registered guests are regulated as follows, including wedding events. I, weekly events including yoga classes.
Up to four.
Up to four. Weekly events.
Okay, well, I haven't read it yet. Oh, 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 I see, you want me to put that in there?
Yeah.
I was gonna, I was gonna say it later, okay, so weekly events, um, up to four per week including yoga classes, art classes, movie screenings and game nights are allowed between the hours of eight AM and ten PM, Monday through Saturday, and eight to nine on Sundays, the occupancy shall not exceed twenty.
Okay.
That's what you, you changed it from fifty to twenty.
Yes.
And I've got a question, and that is, yoga classes at eight to ten PM is not when yoga classes.
Eight AM, it's eight AM to ten PM, or, right.
We have more guests staying at the Capri, I mean, we have thirty rooms, so we could have upwards of sixty guests if we're sold out, and so if we have a yoga or, uh, some sort of a workshop or something like that, there could be-
But you, you were referring to those yoga classes as being local events for the local people.
Right, but then if our registered guests wanna also join in as well.
How about, how about if twenty-two AI says, "Shall not exceed twenty patrons, not counting registered guests?"
That's great.
So twenty patients, or twenty, um, patrons, okay, not including-
Before you write it down though, what's the-
I'm, I'm good with that. Yeah, that's fair.
With that?
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, and then monthly events, not to exceed six per year.
Yep. And it was one hundred patrons.
Um, sorry, oh, the second sentence actually gives you the number of events. So instead of changing that first sentence, if it's okay with you to just change that twelve to six?
Yep.
Up to six.
And then, um, the number of page, patrons in the third sentence will be at a hundred instead of a hundred and fifty?
Yep.
And then, um, are we, so we're going to add in here that, uh, TUP may be requested?
That sorta goes without saying, I think, but what do you think?
I think it needs to be written in here.
I think it's always better to be clear.
Okay.
Even if it's a little bit extra.
Okay.
So maybe, let's see.
A TUP may be requested for additional.
Yeah, TUP may be requested for any-
For a monthly event over the limit of six.
Yeah, perfect.
For additional.
Yeah, additional.
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 Yeah.
Events, okay.
Okay.
And then-
And then for annual events, um, we have, annual events, um, ma, 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 the last, okay, the second to last sentence said the occupancy shall not exceed one eighty, and we're gonna change that to-
One fifty.
Uh, one fifty, and-
Four changes to two.
And the four events within a calendar year changes to two, you just said that, thank you. And then, um, so for Rancho, it says a TUP limited to one event, um, per calendar year. Did you want to limit what a TUP, how many TUPs could be, um, considered by the director?
Which paragraph?
Well, if we go back to, yeah, the same one, the annual events. So in the chart, um, it didn't say anything about TUPs.
Does the TUP affect the number of events or the number of people allowed at the event, or both?
Well, the TUP reviews both.
Both, okay, so.
So if you want to limit the number of people that can be requested through the TUP, it would be one fifty, and it would be up to the director as to whether, or whatever, whatever number, if you chose a different number, but then it would be up to the director's consideration as to, um, you know, the time of year, what else is going on and-
In paragraph III, I, we wanted to take out pop-up markets, it doesn't say that, it says holiday markets. Is that different from pop-up markets?
Um, actually, it, it, um-
She said you can remove it.
Okay, so we'll just delete the words holiday markets.
Okay, so including seasonal events and fundraisers?
Mm-hmm.
And we didn't, we didn't, we didn't finalize the, uh, number of TUPs that could be requested. So the Rancho allows one extra TUP, one event with a TUP per calendar year.
One annual event.
One annual event.
Add that to the paragraph III, I, then.
Okay.
Yeah. If, if, if we're going to set a precedent-
It's consistent.
Let's, let's stay with it.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and then the wedding events, um, second to last sentence has fifteen events and you're gonna change, we're changing that to twelve?
To twelve.
And-
And the one eighty becomes one twenty in line three.
Thank you, one twenty.
Cool. Um, I would also like to, where we have the note on the bottom, I'd like to include that into, um, condition twenty-four. So we outline that it's, cause it sounds like it's part of condition twenty-four anyway, where we are reviewing the times of these events.
So, uh, repeated at the bottom of twenty-four?
So, yeah, attachment A, page eight of fourteen.
Yes.
So-
Just move it there.
In there, it doesn't say any way of how we're gonna actually monitor that. However, on twenty-four, it does say that we're gonna monitor these on an annual basis by the submission, uh, of the summary of events. So if that's how we're gonna monitor the note, you know, for the times, then we need to make it part of condition twenty-four.
Okay, that will be moved.
Rather than part of condition twenty-two.
Yeah, rather than just an obscure note.
Got it, yes.
Yeah, basically move the note to condition twenty-four.
Got it.
Cool. I just asked where the one twenty came from for weddings, the number of people that is seasonal-
From the applicant.
The applicant's proposal.
That's what they said they, they limited to.
Well, and not only that, but it was through their, their traffic, um, demand analysis.
Okay.
If I may also suggest, um, I feel like it would be most appropriate, potentially under standard conditions, as a number, we could renumber it, to add the clarifying paragraph about what the regulations are for the Capri and valet parking.
Oh.
Well, we haven't addressed valet parking yet, have we?
Right, so we have, um, we have, sorry, um, before you ended, I was gonna remind you of the several conditions that we talked about earlier.
We're not ending.
Okay, no, you kind of relaxed and so I wasn't sure.
Oh, no.
Okay, okay, we're just, we're done with that part, okay, okay.
Sigh of relief to get to twenty-two.
Okay, great. We have other things too, so.
So, staff has recommended-
Okay.
Staff has recommended three additional, um, conditions of approval during the presentation, and I wasn't gonna let you forget about that.
And I also had a, I wanted us to discuss something which I, I didn't want us to forget. On page five of eleven, uh, there's a, a suggestion that we have a discussion around the, um, the overflow parking area and-
Yeah, we'll get to that. The whole, that's another one of those lists, but we're not done with this yet.
Okay, alright, I just wanna make sure we don't forget about it. Okay, we're good.
Um, I would like to make formal the review, the annual review for a year or maybe two, the way we did with Rancho, as opposed to le, just leaving it up to a report somewhere. I would like to formalize that it will come to us as a review with any of the-
To review it every year?
Was, was the, was condition twenty-three part of the Rancho resolution?
I believe so.
On the first of each month, provide the city with a report?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then annually?
Yep.
Yeah. With the Rancho, we reviewed it for, I think, two years.
Yes.
Uh, maybe this is just a first year.
You said you reviewed it after two years.
No, we reviewed it after one year and then again after two years.
And then we-
Is there, i- Is there a benefit to having it be a, the first review twenty-four months after the-
No, I think that if there are a nu, number of complaints that are coming in, that we can't wait twenty-four months, I think an, and, at the, at least the first annual review should come to this, to the planning commission.
I'd be in favor of treating it just like we treated the Rancho.
Yep. I would too.
Have, have, so, so condition twenty-four would say on an annual basis, provide the city, CDD, and the planning commission, so they show up?
Yeah, if we're gonna provide clarification, it should be both versus just the director, yes.
Okay. So that would be on line three of item twenty, of condition twenty-four, add and the planning commission.
Does, does that mean that the planning commission takes it up as a formal?
Yeah, we would review.
I think we have to, yeah.
That's sufficient to make that happen?
Yeah, I think so.
We have additional staff now to help with that.
Not so sure. The rest of it looks pretty much boilerplate to me.
Oh, uh, okay, we had the note, we had the note two events scheduled at the same time, that's one of the conditions.
Okay, we've got the, um, off-site parking, um, location. I, I would like to dis, to add that it's not for events.
Yes.
And I think we have to, we, we needed to, we talked about wanting to add that the off-site parking could not be used for events.
Yeah.
The offsite, the offsite parking parcel.
Not for events, yes, right. Additionally, with that off-site parking, I, I, I would like to see something done to that surface.
So-
It's a mess.
No, it is, and it's not level, so it would be-
It's, it's really not good. If, if they're gonna have all these events there.
Well, they're not having events, they're gonna have parking there.
If we're gonna have all these events at the Capri and possibly at the Hummingbird, then we really need to have decent parking, and that's currently not decent parking.
Yeah, I mean, the Ojai Valley Inn has their overflow parking, which is basically a grass lot. It's not ideal, but it works, it's functional. I think as long as there's grass that's alive.
You've also got valet parking there.
Yeah, true, but if they have somebody-
It's not the individual client dropping their car there and then it's a valley park.
They'll have somebody on site directing folks where to park, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think that would help.
But the surface of, of the lot has to be either a natural surface like grass, or it's gotta be gravel.
Right.
There's gotta be something so that when it's wet-
It's gotta be level.
It's gotta be tartar. Yeah, and, and it, and it's not, it shouldn't generate, uh, dirt and dust in the air.
Sure.
An environmental issue.
Well, also the neighbors wouldn't like that, you know, with their houses and their cars.
And gravel is noisy. Just saying.
Gravel is noisy.
Not opposed to gravel.
It is, I've got a gravel parking driveway next to me and it's noisy.
Is it pea gravel? Pea gravel's noisy.
Gravel. Gravel. And what can we do about that?
Well, we can-
Is, is it within the planning commission's purview to specify the surface of a parking area?
Yes, it is. Good, let's do it.
I think it's gotta be a broad thing, and that is, if, I, I believe, I have a gravel driveway myself and, uh, I don't find that to be problematic.
Well, not if you're driving on it. Come on.
People come and go all day long.
If you're trying to sleep next door to it, it's another story.
Anyway, I, excuse me, we ought to specify what the, what the surface needs to accomplish. It needs to be flat and even, it, it needs to, uh-
And not produce excessive dust when parked.
Right, dust-free, noise-free, and level.
And mud-free in the case of rain.
Yep.
So.
Ojai Avenue, right in the middle, is not dust-free.
Dust-free might be a little strong.
Yeah. I, I think we could say grass, natural services, grass, no exposed dirt.
Well, if it's grass, it's gonna be-
Well, they gotta keep it alive. It's gotta be live grass, can we, can we make a condition for live grass?
We don't want live grass.
My yard, my yard transitions from live grass to dead grass once a year.
Well, sure, yeah, I got you, alright.
The Ojai Valley Inn corner there where they park it up-
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking of.
Is, is grass hyphen weeds. As long as they're mowed periodically, um,
Okay, so then we-
They perform a function.
If it's not level, it should be graded level, but-
But then we have to-
Then, then the grass will fill in again.
But we need to be more specific.
Grass and weeds.
Need to say gravel, not pea gravel, cause pea gravel's loud. Or what other, what other surfaces would work?
Why don't we just not?
Maybe, can I offer suggestions?
Yes, please.
Please stay away from grass, only because we have drought tolerant requirements.
Right.
I don't think they're gonna meet that. The second piece is, um-
Decomposed granite?
Put something in that identifies it as permeable, so that we have some options to work with them on. Um, I would, I would say that instead.
So that's like pavers?
A flat permeable surface that does not produce excessive dust.
Excessive dust is probably a better use versus no, what I was hearing was something like, no, no fugitive dust, which is-
We got gravel, we've got pavers.
Don't worry about it.
He'll handle that.
Yeah, let us, let us sort through that.
Okay, good.
Right, right, but I agree with you, you're, you're, in your, in your head, you're thinking those through.
Okay, good, alright.
Yeah.
Okay, did you catch all that?
Well, what I caught on is a flat permeable surface. That does not, does not produce excessive dust.
Where parking does not produce excessive dust.
Okay.
There you go, good.
Does, that, that doesn't necessarily include parking lines to show people where to park.
Well, it-
Which may not be a-
That ma, that makes forty-five a squishy number for the number of parking spaces.
To be fair, the Ojai Rancho Inn site that's, uh, basically adjacent or budding, doesn't have any sort of, um, striping.
Okay, let that go. Um, and I assume that, that our comment earlier about wanting event schedules, um, uh, making sure that the, that no two events would exceed and all that, we can do that when we do the Hummingbird because-
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, or we just make it a condition of both of them.
I think, I think it should be a condition because it's, it was an assumption, an assertion by the applicant that they would schedule things that way.
Yeah, okay, so how do we say that?
So I, I have a condition written down-
Say it the way they said it.
From previously that says no two events shall be scheduled at the same time that would exceed the available onsite plus off-site parking.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's it.
Okay.
Yep.
What she said.
Job, Maura.
I move the question.
You move the question?
Yep.
They talk about number five that Trent wanted to do?
I move that we adopt.
Oh, gotcha.
Who's, who's talking? Is that Sherry has a question?
Sherry was asking about item five.
Trent wanted to talk about on page five?
Oh, I think we addressed that, thank you, Sherry. Thank you for reminding us. That was the, uh, the suggestion to, uh, talk about the overflow parking area to avoid potential dust and provide efficient parking. That's what I wanted to make sure we talked about, and we did. Thank you, Sherry.
Okay.
Before we call the question, could I propose language for the valet parking one?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Sorry.
And I have language, or you go ahead.
Uh, that any onsite valet parking for the hotel, Capri Hotel, shall be approved and operated under the provisions in Ojai Municipal Code, section ten dash two point one four one one point five. Off-site valet parking shall only be allowed, subject to the limits and requirements in Ojai Municipal Code, section one zero dash two one four one one point five sub E, and approval of temporary use permit for each event with off-site valet parking.
We're not gonna argue with that, it's, I, I actually-
I like that.
It's very lawyer-y, I'm sorry.
Yeah, let's, you're saying that on the one hand, they can do all this stuff without, no, hold on, without having to pull a permit.
Yes.
A, a permit for, and a single event permit, but now for their parking, they have to pull a single event permit and be regulated by the, by the, um, they have to be regulated by the, by the council's, um, uh, decision about, uh, valet parking.
Yeah, unfortunately, I can't change what the code says, and this is what the code says, but what we can do is bring an item back at a later date if you'd like to make a recommendation about the contents of the valet parking ordinance.
And again, this is for the valet parking, it's not for the off-site parking. I mean, they're two separate things.
So they can have as much onsite valet- So they can have as much onsite valet parking as their hearts desire. As, as many spaces as they have, they can use a valet for those spaces.
Just like, just like.
They're limited right now in the code, uh, to six events with valet parking, and those events require a TUP to use a valet. Right, so it's a T.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, the hotel.
If the hotel wants to have parking.
Valet parking, it's a TUP.
Offsite.
Offsite valet parking, it's a TUP.
You mean like the space over on Matilah? Is that offsite?
Like, if they, yes, because it's not on their property, right? So this parking lot that they're talking about, construction, constructing, it's offsite, so they have an option of up to six events, that they could have a valet, but they need to get a TUP in order to use the offsite parking.
Is there a fee for a TUP? Of course, silly question.
Now, but they can use that parking lot, they just have, they can't have a company doing valet.
Right.
Without a TUP.
Yes, and that's what the code says. Like I said, we, if, 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 we can, we're happy to bring back an item to talk about this further.
But, but the applicant hasn't even asked for it, so.
No, and this was something that was very important to the city attorney, that we included this type of provision, so.
I have a question. If the hotel runs a shuttle, the Capri runs a shuttle to the parking lot, picks up a group of guests into a bus and drives them over to the Capri, does that constitute a valet service?
No.
You're certain of that?
Yeah, I checked the code before the meeting, and I checked the code during the meeting. The definition of valet is, a different, a person is bringing someone else's car back and forth, is the gist of it. So if, if they're using a shuttle, that wouldn't be conceived of in this ordinance. So that would be an option.
So you could.
And I did check too, it looks like on Google Maps, the Capri in front of it, there's not a sidewalk, but the pathway between the Capri and the proposed parking site does have a sidewalk, to address your concerns.
It doesn't, I walked it.
It's just not very well maintained.
Okay. It's not a great sidewalk, but there is the idea of a sidewalk.
I walked it.
The idea is there.
It is.
There is no sidewalk, here is dirt.
Okay.
And it's not, it's not compacted, uh, DG, it's just dirt.
Okay.
Was he a second on his motion, and is his motion sufficient? He just said I move the question, is that sufficient?
He already made a motion, and you seconded it.
Well, I was.
And we're discussing it. He was saying, time to vote.
Oh, I move the question.
Move the question.
I move the question.
Does that need a second? Yes, okay, I'll do it if it needs.
And we're adding the condition on valet parking.
Okay, yes, I have it.
Which, which.
Too much lawyering, too much lawyer, I don't want to listen to our lawyers.
If we, I know, if we have a problem later, I'll remind you. So the commission, the motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution with the changes as proposed by the commission.
The CUP and the DRP that apply to the Capri.
Yes.
As amended.
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can vote.
Okay. Sherry, let's call the roll on that one.
Murphy?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Quillacy?
Yes. All right, and on the Hummingbird, come back and talk to Lucas and work on it. Thank you all very much, that's, that's a hard road we've been walking tonight, but. We've gotten started at least.
You stepped up to the microphone.
I wanted to ask if you had decided on the decibels.
On the festivals?
Decibels.
Oh, decibels.
We, uh, we did not.
I think what we said was, this, I think what we said was, we're going to stick.
You said that.
I did, yes.
And I said, I think that we should go with the staff report, because it's an abutted, a butting residential zone.
We're talking about what does as amended mean?
Right, does that, is that amendment in there?
See, now we need a lawyer.
There isn't, you did.
I was told I was on duty.
The commission did not.
I do not recall you coming to a consensus on that issue, uh, which means that the residential standard.
Rescind, rescind the previous vote.
You can do a motion.
And ask about that.
Or.
Is that to be an amendment to the resolution?
Because the current resolution with the residential standards is what would stand in this moment right now, that's what you have adopted. So you can do, it's a motion to reconsider.
I'm, I'm, I'm open to a friendly amendment, even though if we're gonna reconsider.
Well, it's his motion.
Can we?
Friendly amendment.
Yeah.
Yeah, friendly amendment, um, because I think it should be the commercial standard, not the residential standard.
And I agree.
For this hotel, the Hummingbird, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that.
The alternative is that we argue decibels on every case in the future.
Well, I.
Only if they butt in the neighborhood.
I, I, I agree, I, I think I'm leaning towards Lucas's suggestion of leaving it as is at the sixty-five, and if we do get complaints.
But as is is not sixty-five right now.
That, that, that this, what we have in here is incorrect, that we need to leave it at what the code currently.
Use the commercial standard.
The commercial standard.
Yep.
Because that's where the land is.
And then if we have complaints, we can always adjust.
That's correct.
To, to make sure this is procedurally correct, can we get a motion to reconsider? In a second.
I, I move that we reconsider.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay.
And then the motion, from what I'm hearing, is to amend, add to the as amended, that the decibel.
That we use the city's current noise standard for commercial property.
Okay, is, and that friendly is accepted? Okay. Sherry?
Oh, the, the motion maker accepted.
I don't think these guys did.
The seconder.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were the first and the second.
I don't remember.
He made the motion.
Initial motion.
I do not accept it.
Okay, so your option is to do.
You're saying that.
So you can do a substitute motion at this point? And you'll need a second to make that happen.
All right, I'll make a substitute motion.
So this, so the substitute motion is to amend the decibel limit to align with the commercial standard in the municipal code. Is there a second?
And I, I seconded that the first time, I thought I did that already.
I know, but then.
Well, for discussion purposes, I can second it.
Okay, and now, now there's a discussion, and then we'll vote, right?
Yeah.
Did you want to open it up to public comment, Larry?
Did somebody raise a hand out there?
Larry?
We've, no. We've had, we've had sufficient public comment this evening on this matter. The, it, the public comment is on the item, not the motion.
No, I agree, I agree.
Okay.
So we have, we have the motion to further amend the resolution to include.
Correct.
Commercial noise standard, not what was in the resolution.
Yes.
And we do have a motion and a second on that. So Sherry, let's call the roll again.
Murphy?
No.
Bennett?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Quillacy?
Yes.
That's my first.
All right.
Now we're done.
Now we're done?
Yes.
All right, well, let's move on to item three, future agenda items. Okay.
Objective standards.
All right. Take it away, Lucas.
Well, uh, so August twenty-first, a regularly scheduled meeting, the only item we have on there is objective design standards, and I'm just gonna be frank with you, it's not ready, it won't be ready, um, for the twenty-first. I'm poring through it right now. I will tell you that I have something that I think you're gonna like a lot better than what we saw before. But unfortunately, we've reached out to some of these other cities that we had thought would have, uh, objective standards, and they don't. And it sounds like they're waiting for us to do it.
Oh, boy.
Oh, boy, have they listened to us?
So you want to push, you want to push that to the fourth?
It needs to be pushed to the fourth, yeah, it's just not gonna be ready by the twenty-first. At least to something where I feel comfortable and confident at this point with it.
Is there anything else that's pushing up?
There is nothing else that's ready to go for the twenty-first.
So we're canceling.
So I'm recommending that we cancel this meeting.
Okay, so. Here, cancel the twenty-first and move objective design standards to September fourth.
Correct.
And there may be other stuff that comes up.
There is, there's one other thing that I want to mention.
Great.
The land use element, the administrative draft.
Good old LU dash X, yep.
Is coming, we're anticipating it coming on the fourth, that's what we're scheduled for.
Okay, great.
So why not bring two advanced planning items to one meeting?
Oh, ouch.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. And the pending is all still pending, it's somewhere out beyond September fourth.
Say what?
All the pending items.
Yes, those are currently pending, yes. And I can just, I'm looking at it right now, none of those are, yeah, none of those are ready.
So a motion to cancel the twenty-first?
I'll make a motion, cancel the twenty-first.
Second.
Okay.
And move the objective design standards to September fourth, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
Sherry, call the roll, please.
Bennett?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Quillacy?
Yes. And I see no other business before the commission this evening.
Yes, we do have our liaison.
That's business, yes. We do have our, our, uh, city council liaison here. Director, oh, directors report, anything else you want to add?
Oh, no, 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 I think we've, we've had a lot of conversation today.
Okay.
Let's move on to other items.
Any, any commission members have anything you want to report? Okay. Isn't this fun?
Yeah, it's so much fun, thank you so much, you did a great job tonight, I loved the collaborative effort. And, uh, and, yeah, and then just thank you for all that you do. I think many of you know that we have been, uh, working to fill, uh, appointments, that we've been having interviews, and I, I know myself and, um, and the mayor have, 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 uh, made our nomination recommendation working alongside Commissioner Trent. So hopefully, we will be bringing that back up, I don't know if it's scheduled for the next meeting, but, um.
It's August twenty-seventh, yeah.
Yes, I believe, I, I didn't see it on the consent calendar for August twenty-seventh, but I, I'm hopeful that we can do that, because I know that you'd like to have that, um, settled. Um, and I think that is all I have. Uh, I wanted to let you two, let you know also, I will not be here on the September meeting, um, but I will be zooming in, um, from the UK, so.
Terrific, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a good time wherever you're zooming from. Okay. Now there being no other business before the commission, it is nine twenty-seven, we're adjourned.